Okay, it is 6:03 PM tonight on July 19th. We want to welcome everyone out to a special work session tonight. At this time you'll notice that we are missing one council member. We have Tim Ball that is on his way down from Salt Lake. He's caught in a little bit of traffic, so he will be joining us a little bit later on. But in that, we have a full council here for that. I thought maybe wise is to kind of go through a little bit of the agenda, what we're trying to go through and accomplish tonight. Tonight is a work session. So what a work session is, is to receive input, to be able to ask questions, to be able to, for the council to get a better understanding. There probably will be no decision done at all. It's not an agenda item for any decision. But also, I wanted to make sure everyone's where tonight. Some of you thought that maybe there was a planning commission in Alpine on this specific item. It is not on the planning commission in Alpine. It's now on August the 2nd. So that has been moved off the Alpine Planning Commission Agenda to August 2nd. One of the reasons we did it at 6:00 PM was to try to help you if you wanted to run to that, but we understand that Alpine has moved that. I thought it'd maybe be appropriate to maybe go through and just understand a little bit about, a little history about that. So I'm going to ask council member Brittany Bills, maybe to give us a little bit. She lives up to your subdivision. She's spent an awful lot of time working with, I know with, with up there in Alpine, trying to educate us as a council, working with residents. So I give her maybe a couple minutes. And then we do have the developer that has made the presentation to Alpine that is with Patterson Construction, and maybe give him about three or four minutes. So the plan is to have Brittany go. We'll have Ross Welch from Patterson Construction just give a little history and that. And then we're going to give 10 minutes to their, I understand there's a viewpoint presentation that's been sent in. After that, we will have some discussion by the city engineer, police chief and fire. Then we have also a traffic engineer that's going to go through a traffic study this city's done. And then we will go to that point and hopefully we'll have a little bit of time for some questions, have the council input. And then if we have enough time, we need to be done by 6:55 PM. So you can see we're going to be busy. So Brittany, I'll give some time to you. Then right after that, Ross. And then we'll go right after Ross Welch, right into the viewpoint presentation. Brittany?
Hey, thanks Mayor and thank you, members of the council, Mayor, staff chiefs for coming. I know that it's an extra hour of work. You don't get paid overtime for this stuff. So thank you for taking this extra hour to meet with us. I appreciate it very much. For those of you who don't know, who I think that's probably very few, we're talking about the Viewpoint subdivision tonight. This is the subdivision that is kind of on top of the gravel pit by the entrance to American Fort Canyon. And when the subdivision was approved 20 years ago, it was approved with the condition that there would be a road connecting Highland and Alpine. 20 years ago is a long time. Lots of things have changed since then, lots of development. The other condition for approval of the subdivision was the hill that Viewpoint sits on the top of. And that grade of that hill is a little bit steeper than normally we allow in the city. So I think there are lots of really good questions tonight. And I appreciate the mayor letting us have this session. The other thing that I wanted to say was just thank you to my neighbors and friends and all of those who came tonight. I know that it's time out of your day and I really appreciate all the work that you've put into it. I know you've held meetings and you've had, I know threads going back and forth talking about it. And this presentation that you put together that was really well done. So thank you to the residents for taking the time. I'm going to probably be pretty quiet tonight because I've got all the time in the world that I can talk to staff and to my neighbors. So I'm going to mostly save my time so that we can hear from you.
Thank you, Mayor. Ross Welch with Patterson Construction. I just wanted to give a brief history here. This development that we're proposing is called Smooth Canyon. It was phase two of an existing development that was done in 2001. The original plan was for an additional extension to the existing park that is up there with third acre lots, third to quarter acre size lots. That was back in, like I said, 2001. We have not done anything on it. We've let it, we kind of view that as food storage up there. And so now we've come to the point, we want to go move forward. We've let the approval lapse that had that, so it reverts back to its original zoning, which is half acre lots. And so what's being proposed for this development now is half acre lots as opposed to third and quarter size acre lots. And the plan has always been that Highbent Road just shoots through and connects. We had to connect with our neighbor, which eventually became Viewpoint. And so those roads were aligned. We heard concern about this and so we have proposed, we changed our submission to have the road kind of go up and around and back down, U-shaped type situation, thinking maybe that will have some impact. So we proposed that to Alpine City. Their comments back from staff that we have right now were, we want the road straight through. As developers, we're fine either way. The U shape is a little more expensive for us, has a bigger impact to us. But we develop in Highland, we develop in Alpine. And so to accommodate our Highland neighbors, we're saying, yeah, we'll go ahead and do this. So we were scheduled, as you mentioned, for planning commission tonight. We heard that you guys were having a meeting. And so we said, let's push that meeting off two more weeks to give you time to get together and formulate some more discussion about it. So that's it. Do you have any questions?
No, I just also wanted to say thank you for coming and meeting with the residents and for the proposal. I appreciate that design and think it can make a big difference. So thank you.
I will apologize. I told the mayor this. My grandson was born. I'm going to go to the hospital to see him. So I will not be here today. But I wanted to make presentation now, and I do want to watch this. So I'll be here for about another 15 minutes or so.
Thank you. Some of you just kind of, we used to, when Ross came and showed some of us the design on it, we joked about it being called Brittany Lane because Brittany, our council member Bills, has really been advocate, trying to say, hey, how do we not get a straight road? So as you can see, we're trying to use a little bit of relationships. Everyone always thinks it's the builders come in and always ask the city for all the, hey, we want to get, we're kind of asking some, you know, a relationship there with Patterson. Can you help us get a curved road? And so some of that, just to give a little bit. Let's turn the time over to your presentation.
All right, thank you very much. Before I start, I just want to say that this presentation is a collaboration among many of the residents in Viewpoint neighborhood. So I'm grateful for all the contributions. Let's get started. I'm sorry? Oh, my name is Dan Milliron. And did I see a laser? Looks like there might be a laser, but maybe not. Okay. So Brittany already went through some of the context. I don't think we need to repeat that. We recognize that it's not a new issue. It's an old issue. To date, there have been six kind of groups of proposals from Highland city officials, the short straight connection, the horseshoe connection, traffic calming measures from the residents. This has been the proposal of no connection at all, just keep things the way they are. Proposal of a physical gate. And then finally, the one that we're going to concentrate on tonight, which is only emergency vehicle access via a traversable barrier. And we'll demonstrate what that means. But bottom line, no through traffic, only emergency traffic. So of those six potential options, three have survived to date. The horseshoe road, traffic calming, and the emergency only. The neighborhood is no longer expecting to be able to put up a physical gate. We realize that that won't work with emergency access. So let's talk about what's at stake. First of all, this is the very important point. The connection is equivalent to a shortcut through the Viewpoint neighborhood. A shortcut between Alpine and Allpoint South and the American Fort Canyon. We'll look at that in a second. Shortcut equals greater traffic volume. And they're motivated to go fast. After all, it's a shortcut. The shortcut would be right along Park Drive, which you're probably familiar with. But let me point out a few salient points. It's a local street, not a collector road. It's very curved. And one of those curves blinds you as you come down in the evening during rush hour because the sun is setting directly in front of you. It's a narrow street. It's a standard residential street. So with two cars parked on each side, there's not even enough room for two cars to pass each other. It's crisscrossed with walking trails. I'll show you a map of that. It's dotted with children's parks. It's home to young families that have young children. And it's already threatened by a baseline of fast drivers. If you talk to any of the people who live along Park Drive, they will tell you, yes, we often have people, even who live in the neighborhood, who are driving too fast. And finally, what's at stake is the fact that there's a hill on the south end of Park Drive that is currently out of spec. Brittany mentioned it. The spec is eight degrees grade. It is at 10.5 degrees grade. So what that means to the city, and I'm not a lawyer, but more liability. If you bring Alpine residents down that hill and invite them, they have a crash or an accident, injury or something, they will understand that the city knew that this was already a dangerous hill. So let's look at the shortcut. And the colors aren't coming out very well. But basically, the shortcut will connect the Alpine residence, if you can look up there, or I guess you're looking down here, to Allpoint South, all the way down to Orem because there's that nice, I forget the name of it, but it goes through Cedar Park, pardon?
Canyon Road.
Canyon Road. Takes you all the way down to Orem. We frequently use that road if we have to go to the Orem Costco. Also, Allpoint's east into the American Fort Canyon. And don't dismiss that as a small amount of traffic. There is a lot of recreational traffic that goes up into that canyon. Let's look a little bit more at the shortcut. What it'll do is it will motivate Alpine residents to use our neighborhood as their throughway. And the reason why they're so motivated is if, because if you look at the numbers, and I did this analysis, including the horseshoe, I had to estimate what the time of drive would be and the distance. But even with the horseshoe, an Alpine resident will save almost two minutes of time over a mile of distance, and they'll skip one traffic light. So in our opinion, that horseshoe will not be sufficient to drive traffic back onto the main roads. They will instead logically choose the shortcut. Let's spend a few minutes talking about road classifications. And the two that we need to discuss are local streets versus collector roads. So currently, Park Drive is a local street. It's residential, meets all the standards for that, except for that grade on the hill. In order for it to be bumped up or promoted into a collector road, it has to have, according to the Utah code, a rule of thumb is 1,000 trips per day. Now, a trip is in one direction. So if you take your kids to school and come back, that's two trips. If you go to work and come back, that's two trips. Go out shopping, come back, two trips. Pick up your kids from school, come back, two trips. Receive a package from Amazon or UPS or the post office. Now, that gets amortized across the neighbors, but that's other trips. And as we know, those kinds of commercial volumes have increased drastically since 20 years ago. The frequency of trips is expressed by the Federal Highway Association as an average of 10 trips per day. That's what they estimate. Given that we have 103 homes in the Viewpoint neighborhood, we are already at that threshold of 1,000 trips per day. And certainly, absolutely, and I'm pretty sure that the traffic study will verify this, but if you add the additional traffic flow from Alpine through that shortcut, you will definitely exceed that 1,000 trips per day rule of thumb, bumping up Park Drive to be a collector road. So let's look at what that would mean. If Park Drive becomes a collector road, here's what has to happen. First of all, you can see the description of a local street on the bottom. A collector is different and has a few different criteria. First of all, it has to have limited access from local streets and limited individual driveways. If you look at Park Drive, which is only a half mile long where there's residents, there are seven cross streets and 38 driveways. That certainly is not a limited amount. Furthermore, it's crisscrossed by three walking trails. You can see each of them dotted here on the map. It's also home to three children's parks that are adjacent to and a butt up to Park Drive. And then here's another criteria that would have to change if Park Drive becomes a collector road. The current spec for Highland is that a local street have a curve. They measure curve with centerline radius. And you have to have at least 150 feet. For a collector street, that limit bumps up to 370 feet. Of the three curves on Park Drive, all of them currently satisfy the local criteria, but none of them, not even close, they're way off of being a collector street centerline radius. The worst one you can see on the right, that's the curve at the top of the hill, has a centerline radius of only 221 feet. And you can barely read it. It's in yellow, but it's, or it's 227, I believe it was. So 227 feet on the curve that's on the right, far less than the required 370. Another issue, as we've already mentioned, is the hill grade. The hill grade is currently 10.5%. For a local street, we're way out. It's supposed to be a limit of eight. If you bump, if you evolve Park Drive into a collector road, then it has to be seven. So you're even worse. In fact, 50% worse than what the spec is for Highland. Furthermore, if you look at all the existing traffic that goes from Alpine into Highland, crossing 92, you'll see that they all have multiple lanes and traffic lights. So it would be expected that eventually, if Park Drive becomes a collector, you would need to put a traffic light at the bottom, which would make things even worse because there's a blind curve right there at the bottom and you can't see if there are cars piled up at a traffic light. The council has offered some calming measures. Let's talk about that for a minute. These mitigations include chokers, shifters, diverters, lane reduction, speed humps, et cetera. The issue with traffic calmers is that they do not solve the volume problem. You will still have the same traffic volume, maybe a slight reduction because people don't want to go through the calmer. But in general, calmers are very short term. Once the driver gets through a calmer, they step on the gas and increase their speed again. So they have a very short effective distance. We would love to have a traffic calmer to solve the short range problem that we currently have on Park Drive, which is that as you go into the sun at rush hour, you cannot see if there are kids in the road. You get blinded. So a traffic calmer would be welcome there, but it certainly will not solve the traffic problem, the volume problem that would occur from a shortcut. So how do we solve this? Well, we have a win-win situation. Win-win solution. Go ahead, make the connection. But just make it only for emergencies. Do not have any through traffic, no shortcut. Lots of benefits. The horseshoe then becomes optional because there's no through traffic that you have to calm. You save lots of money. Every square foot of street that the developer has to build in order to satisfy the horseshoe is a square foot that Patterson cannot sell. If you look at the 46 plots that are currently on the development plan for the horseshoe, you can easily see how, if you remove the horseshoe, you can get in another three houses, including one on the very expensive prime real estate that has the view of Lehigh. So how do you achieve that? How do you get an emergency access only, it's with a traversable barrier? And I'm going to show you some examples. In these two examples, there are breakaway posts. They allow emergency access, a fire truck, police subcar. Even residents can drive right over those breakaway posts, no damage to any vehicles. But they clearly mark the fact that this road is not intended to be traversed through traffic. Another way to do it is with raised cobblestones. And you might put grass in between them or some combination. If you look at the bottom picture, there's a, I can't tell if it's raised or not, but it looks like it's cobblestone with some vegetation and with pylons, breakaway pylons. Another thing that can be done is we can include a city ordinance that would close it to through traffic, just like Park City did recently, where they closed a Main Street road because there was too much danger from traffic. There's precedent for this in Highland. Highland has already closed off a shortcut just north of here, just past Wendy's, about the same distance from here to Wendy's. There is a road that used to have a shortcut, but it's now been cut off. So, and you can't see very well because of the colors, but on the right is the inset that shows that lane closure. And they did a complete closure. We're not requesting a complete closure. We're requesting an emergency access. So it's still open, but not the through traffic. Here's a final graph that summarizes the six different options that we, that I talked about at the beginning. Each one is a column. On the left are the rows. Those are rows that are issues. You can see that our compromise option, the win-win solution, checks off all the boxes. The horseshoe is unfortunately unable to solve the issues related with traffic volume. So that's why it has so many red blocks. I'd like to thank city council. We'd like to thank the city council. We're grateful for the horseshoe option. That was a generous offer. We hope that it's unnecessary if we simply go with the much simpler, less expensive emergency access only traversable barrier. And before I sit down, I want to say one more thing. I believe in children playing outside, making lots of noise with dirt on it. I believe in the principle of least regret. I believe that final decisions don't have to be. I believe that Bill and Ted got it right, if you know that reference. And I believe that a traffic shortcut will devastate the Viewpoint neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Just to kind of, we now have, hopefully be some time for at least the council to ask some questions. We're hoping I got some cards here for some residents to like to talk. If I want to turn the time now over to our traffic engineer from Hell Engineering, they come up, the city has went and obtained a traffic study to kind of help us go through what the traffic volume might be. And I believe there's some studies that you might be able to help us pull up. If you'll just introduce yourself, please.
Yeah, of course. Josh Gibbons with Hell's Engineering. We're based out of Lehigh, Utah. We were asked by the city to look at a traffic study here related to the connection. The study we looked at focuses on potential traffic volumes that would increase due to the connection, travel times that were already mentioned in the previous presentation. This is the memo we prepared that you can see on your screen. If you could, I'd like to go to page four, just to talk from the map a little bit. So we took some counts out at the different intersections during peak hours in the morning and in the evening to see what the current volumes are. I apologize, the numbers are a little small. But you can see on Park Drive, the current volume in the morning is 141 cars in an hour. In the evening, it's 143. So about 140 cars currently on Park Drive in that peak hour, in either peak hour. So this is existing conditions, obviously. And if you could go to the next slide, next page. We looked at each scenario. So this scenario would be a straight connection. And to explain how we estimated the volumes, we used the Mountainland Association of Governments, the MAG, travel demand model, which if you're familiar, it's a model that MAG uses to plan the roadways in Utah County primarily. And what it does is it uses land use assumptions as far as number of residential units. It uses a number of employees for commercial office use and all those different uses. And then roadway networks to estimate the volumes that are going to be on different roads. So what we did in that model was put in a new link, basically, you know, on this road as a straight connection and in the other scenarios to see how much traffic it picks up. And what the model looks for, just so you know, is travel times. It looks for travel distances. And it finds a path of least resistance to get where people are trying to go. The model understands that people here in Alpine or Highland want to get to employment centers and retail locations. So it understands where those are and gives us a good estimate of where that traffic goes. So you can see here in the white are the existing volumes that we already looked at. The yellow are, the yellow are the with connection.
Can all the residents see these numbers okay up there? Would you, would you mind seeing if you can just increase? I just want to make sure everyone can see what we're, can you see it now?
And maybe we could zoom in on Park Drive a little bit. So if you look at Park Drive, currently there's about 140 cars in the peak hour. And what we anticipated based on the model was an addition of 60 to 80 cars being added to the road during the peak hours. So an increase of about 50%, okay? If we could go to the next, and sorry, I guess before I move on, the orange means an increase, green means a decrease. So we saw an increase on Park Drive, obviously. And then a decrease on SR 92 to the west. And then Canyon Crest Road to the north-south there, also on Healy Boulevard on the north end. So people are choosing to go through the neighborhood instead of taking those routes. If we could go to the next page. This is the scenario of a curved, the U-shaped circuitous connection. And we anticipate this will be less. So we anticipate between 50 and 70 cars cutting through. So a slight decrease based on the straight connection. And similarly, we see a decrease on the other rows in the area. And then if we could go to the third map, and I don't know if Andy Spencer wants to talk about this connection a little bit since it hasn't been discussed yet. Andy, do you want to talk about this gravel pit connection at all before I get into it at all?
Well, and this connection is not yet on any of the city's master plans, but I know that it's been discussed, you know, both by Alpine's council, by Highland's council. And so because it's out there as a discussion point, a lot of the and so because it's out there as a discussion point, a lot of it's not on anybody's point, master plans, but it's out there as a discussion point, we asked Hales to also evaluate what would the impact be if a road was connected through the gravel pit that essentially put the connection to Park Drive as a turn off of that road, the way that you see that in the map, because that's how the logical connection would go. Were this to go in, the through-street would be the gravel pit road, and then any connection to Park would be a turn off of that street. And so while this isn't on anybody's master plans, it is something that's being discussed, and we thought it had value in evaluating as we looked at this plan.
Yeah, thank you. So like Andy said, it's a future road that may have a possibility of going in, and so what we did, we looked at it in a future scenario, 2050, because that's something the model can help us understand too, is how traffic will grow over time. So these are 2050 numbers, which is why they're a little bit higher. So you can see here with that connection, we anticipate a difference of about, you know, 40 or 50, 45 additional cars on the road. A lot of that, the cut-through traffic would go through on the gravel pit connection if that were to come in. So those were the three scenarios we looked at. And real quick, if you can go back to page three, we wanted to evaluate those numbers and make sure we understood those. So what we did is look at a travel time scenario, like the neighbors did as well. So this is a free-flow condition, I would say, it doesn't account for delay at intersections, so some of these would be a little bit higher. We looked at travel time from the Healy Boulevard-Hivebent Road intersection, which is north in Alpine. We looked at the travel time from there to Park Drive, SR92, and also to the signal at Canyon Crest Road, or 4800 West and SR92. Because, you know, there's people that are going to be going east on SR92, people are going to be going west on SR92, and people are going south on North County Boulevard. So what we found was, if people are going to Park Drive from Alpine, no connection takes four minutes, and any of the other scenarios are clearly faster. So, you know, we agree with what the residents were talking about, that people going to American Fort Canyon, northeast Pleasant Grove, east Cedar Hills, definitely could choose to take this route, and that's why we're seeing the cut-through through the neighborhood from the model. If you look at the scenario, and I, there's an asterisk by the four minutes because there's added time even on top of that to get through that signal, as you all know, it takes time to wait at a red light to get through. Now, if people are going from Alpine to the signal itself at Canyon Crest, because they're wanting to go west on SR92, or south on North County Boulevard, it's two, it's almost three minutes currently today. If we add the connections and people drive on those, we anticipate that to be a longer travel time to go from Alpine to the signal. It would be faster if the gravel pit connection went in, but it's slower for the other connections, specifically the circuitous network. So looking at these numbers, one thing I'll also point out is we counted the turning movements, the volume at Park Drive and SR92, and at the peak hours, 10 to 15% of people are coming or traveling to and from the east, and 85 to 90% of people are traveling to and from the west towards west SR92 and south North County Boulevard, if that makes sense. So most people are going west or south, you know, towards Lehigh, towards I-15, south on North County Boulevard, and that 10 to 15% would be going to Canyon, northeast Pleasant Grove, east Cedar Hills. So while we pointed out that the travel time is faster for those people going east, it's a low percentage of traffic that's going that way, it's 15% of the total. 85% are going the other route, which is actually faster to go on the existing roads. So which is why we're not seeing a huge increase on the road of 60 to 80 cars. That 60 to 80 cars is, on average, a car every 45 seconds to a minute that's added to the road. So any questions on all that?
Mayor, can we make this study available to the residents?
Yeah, we don't have any, this is now finalized and signed, correct?
It is, yes.
Yeah, now that's also been, I think, put out there publicly, I think we should be able to share that with residents, solving the problem.
Mayor and Council, if I can add one point. What we worked with Hales to look at, and you'll notice in the study, is all of the study looks at the peak hour, right? So what we're looking at is the peak hour between 7:15 and 8:15 in the morning, we're looking at the 5 to 6 o'clock hour at the night. And so when we're given these hourly volumes, these are the volumes you would see in those hours. Obviously, in the other hours of the day, it's going to be far less, but we thought that the most appropriate was to look at, well, what would the residents experience in that peak hour, that morning hour and the afternoon hour. So when Josh is quoting, you know, those hourly volumes, that's what we'd see in the morning and the evening, and in the middle of the day, and the later evening, early morning, obviously, the numbers would be less.
Can I, can I ask a question about that? Does this take into account the traffic increases that happen when school starts?
Yes, so we did account for the school traffic volumes in the study, yes.
How do you account for that?
So we collected some counts in June, admittedly, but we used some counts that UDOT had from April, I think it was, I think it was 2019 we got those volumes. UDOT has some really good data at the signal itself, at North County Boulevard and SR92, where daily we can look at what the traffic volumes were at that intersection. So we use that to, you know, adjust for those school traffic, so, yeah.
Thank you. Andy, are these counts consistent with the traffic counts that we looked at with 4800
They, they went back, as far as what they looked at, they went back to some actual counts that have been counted on the 4800 West corridor in 2019, and used that as part of their baseline data to, to make sure that the data was consistent between the studies.
So Josh, a couple of concerns the residents brought up. It appears there's 38 homes that all have driveways backing onto this, you know, is this normal traffic? When you look at a neighborhood residential street and you look at the traffic counts, is that a concern to have the number of cars? And then if you have 38 homes that would have cars backing up, you know, because sometimes when you talk about a collector road versus neighborhood, collector, we're trying to make sure there's no, no cars being backed onto it. Where neighborhood road, we haven't really looked at that, so this was not designed in that fashion. So the count and the backing out.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's definitely local roads that experience this volume across the state, you know. I live on one of those roads that has a high volume and driveways back up onto it. So it, the road can handle the traffic, right? It can handle that traffic volume, but it's a matter of those traffic calming measures being put in place to, to slow people down, to discourage them from using it, and encourage them to go slower, right? I didn't mention, but in the study too, we pointed out that a two-lane road like this can handle up to 750 cars per hour, that's both directions, so 350-ish each direction, at an acceptable level. So with this having, you know, less than 300 cars in the peak hour, it can handle that. The question becomes, I will say, that's the engineering capacity number. I will say some cities adopt a livability standard where they don't want that much traffic on the road, okay? So that's, the road can handle it, it's just a matter of what the city wants to do.
So what are some of those cities, what's livability? I mean, you bring that up, is it 350's livability, is it 200, what's kind of been?
The one I can remember is 600, so it's a little bit lower, so it would still handle it. I can't remember the city yet, that may have been Lehigh, I believe, yeah.
Let me ask a question about your modeling. You said this is a model for traffic to 2050, is that correct? Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, so we looked at it, you can look at it in any year, so we did an existing year and then a 2050 year.
Which you're estimating for 2050?
Yeah.
How reliable is that modeling? I know UDOT did a road study for Canal Boulevard, the east-west corridor between Alpine Highway and North County Boulevard in 2017, it was published, I believe. And they estimated that by 2050, there'd be somewhere between 6,000 and 8,000 cars go up and down that road a day. Well, it's 28 years before that, and we're already up past 6,000 in some of the modeling we've done, and that's without even the full development of the 689 homes there. So it seems to me like these models, to a degree, are a little bit flawed. I mean, because if we reach that traffic pattern in a few years rather than in 28, we really don't know what the traffic, I mean, it's an estimate against estimate, right?
Yeah, right. And I can't speak to Canal Boulevard specifically, but I will say we trust the difference between years. So what we do is we say, what does the model say today's volumes are? What does it say 2050 is? And we take actual counts and then calibrate it to say, well, today's volumes are actually this, therefore, we'll adjust the projections to match what the actuality is. So, yeah, that's what we do, what we do trust the difference between years, so.
You also put in here some comments about traffic calming. In your study, when I saw something a little bit earlier, it says, hey, you'd wait to see what the traffic is, but if the council wanted to look at what are some very effective traffic calming measures? We saw that the residents, you know, recommended maybe some drive-over type of barriers or things. What have you seen that have been really effective traffic calming measures if we want to try to limit the traffic to this area?
Yeah, so a lot of times the first thing cities will do is put up the driver feedback signs, which tell you how fast you're going, they'll flash a light to help you slow down. Those have mixed results, that could be one that could be considered though. And we recommended to start with those kind of low-level, cheaper options to see how they take and then proceed with others as needed. They mentioned trails, you know, there's these trail connections, so a lot of times a trail connection will do bulb-outs to make the pedestrians more visible for cars, so that's one option you could consider there. As far as the barrier, I've seen it be used in some locations, and they are effective, I would say.
Have you ever seen where they proposed it being maybe a grass area to look like it's a different type of road, or they have, if you want to see the little barriers where you can drive over it, but they pop back up? Have you seen or seen if that's?
Yeah, I think we've seen those. I would say they're more for dense areas, you know, when you have a multifamily project, maybe at their access, maybe as they, you know, well, I guess at their access, if the residents nearby don't want that, the multifamily traffic going into a neighborhood, let's say, that's when they use it. I haven't seen it be used maybe on a full local or collector road, per se, so.
So is this road a collector or a local road?
I'd say, I would say it probably has been designed as a local, but as pointed out, it has the volume as a collector, so.
So hold it, just repeat that. The volume's a collector, but it's designed as a local?
Well, per the state code, I would say, sure, it is a collector. The city, I don't believe, has defined what those thresholds are themselves, most cities do.
Why would you classify this collector? Because we're bringing traffic in from other cities to go through it, or what classifies it as a collector? Is it the number of cars, what classifies it?
I was quoting back to what was referenced, is it 1,000 cars per day? Apparently that's part of the state code, I'm not familiar with that. As far as the connectivity, I would say that generally this, the general connectivity would suggest it could be a collector, yeah.
Any other questions on, there will be time, we're going to, any other questions while we have the traffic engineer, we might have you come back up as we try to get some things, but thank you. I wanted, you know, before we maybe turn in some other time for residents, I want to turn it to our city engineer, you know, maybe just to give a little bit of feedback on why we need to have a connection here, and then public safety, if we have our fire chief and police chief, maybe just give a little bit of input, what they're looking for with this type of connector. So we'll go with first Andy Spencer.
Mayor and Council, I'll be quick. You know, there's a few reasons that we want to look at this neighborhood having a second connection. There always was planned for a second connection, as you all know, and the reasons for that are, you know, we've got 103 homes up there with one connection, that is a fairly steep connection, has been noted. So we've got, we've got maintenance considerations, number one, what do we do when we have to do road maintenance on, or major road maintenance on that road that leads to this neighborhood? We've got to have a second connection or a second way for these folks to get out, because the day that we have to remove the asphalt off that street and do any major repairs, we've got to have another way to get people out of there. If you look at that under the same category, as many of you know, even though the waterline shouldn't fail, we often have a waterline leak, and a waterline leak can take, you know, and cut a line across from where you're sitting to the front doors in about 10 minutes. I mean, we can cut, we could make this road impassable, and we would make it intentionally, but the waterline could make this impassable almost instantaneously. And then it's a day, a two-day-long fix, right? And depending on how long we've got it, and at that point, we've got 103 homes with no way to pass. Additionally, what we've observed, and I specifically interviewed our snowplow crews on this because I had heard about this happening, and so I wanted to hear it myself, and so I asked the staff member that plows this area most often, I said, so how often do, in any of these storms, do people park at the base of the hill and walk up? And the comment that I got back was, generally on most of the bigger storms, they will observe that there are cars that can't get up that steep grade, and so the residents for that first initial, you know, big icy part of the storm, there will be some residents that because of whatever traction or vehicles they have, have to park at the bottom of the hill and walk up. And combined with that, this hill is actually fairly difficult in the right storm for our trucks to make it up, and there have been a few storms where we've had a very, very difficult time making it up to be able to even then clear the snow to make it accessible. And we have observed a couple of conditions where on the right storm, the cars have kind of piled up, if you will, not necessarily all banged up, but people avoiding people, you know, trying to avoid hitting their neighbors coming down the hill, and people slid off and the road's almost become impassable during some of those storm events. And so in a general sense, on the engineering, city engineering and public works side, we don't see this road being a collector road, and I understand the residents' concern, because every road that has a connection has the opportunity for someone to drive through it. We view this as a local road and would advocate for the more circuitous connection that would keep the traffic down, if you will, and reduce the attractiveness of the route, but we very much think that there is a high degree of value in having a second access to this neighborhood through which residents can access at any time, or emergency vehicles, or snowplows, or whatever needs to occur, because that's why we have a public network. And I will note that the road that was pointed out by the residents is actually slated for connection in our impact facility fee plan, and so we actually are currently connecting, collecting impact fees to make a connection there on.
You're talking the 11200 that was put?
11200, the example that was shown there, and I don't, that's not to be combative or anything, just simply to indicate that the city is consistent and we actually are planning that connection to happen as well. We certainly don't want any incidents, and we're very much willing to find traffic calming solutions that everyone can feel will be effective, but for the good of the residents, there really does need to be a functional second connection to this subdivision.
Just for the residents, let me kind of share, since we're coming in about 10-2, we have a special flag ceremony, so what I'm planning to do is have the fire and police chief visit. We will then take a little break, but I'm going to invite you all to stay for our special flag ceremony, and we'll have an open prayer. Then there is a time, what's called unscheduled public appearances. At that time, we would like to open it up for you to be able to come up during that time as the public hearing, where unscheduled public appearances is where you can make your comment just a little bit after 7:00. So if you're getting a little nervous, you might need to have time, we'll make sure you have time for that. Will be during, after we start city council, during that, unscheduled public appearances is where we recommend that you come up. But we'll now turn the time over to our fire chief and police chief, maybe a little bit what they're seeing with this connection.
So as has been stated, excuse me, the secondary egress access is big for us. The subdivision doesn't meet code unless the connection. The subdivision doesn't meet code unless the connection happens. That's the way a subdivision that has 103 lots exceeds 30 and would have been sprinkled is with that future connection. That's the only way that a subdivision gets approved on a one-access, is that there's a future connection. So the subdivision currently doesn't meet code, so if there isn't a connection...
So which code is there not meeting? Does it city code, state code, federal code?
That'd be the IFC, the International Fire Code, which is adopted by the state and also Highland City. The other thing that, with the... I call them bullards, the knocked-down posts. We do have a road in Alpine that they put those on. It's an emergency egress out of one of the subdivisions. It goes onto a dirt road. People have figured out that they can drive through them. And that's what we have happening right now, is people are just driving over the top of the bullards. So, I mean, that is one thing that we would expect with the bullards. We can't, in my opinion, make, we can't have it just be for emergency vehicles. We have to have people, we've had three or four fire events over the years. We have, you know, the potential for the road to go out. It also affects us in getting fire apparatus up the steep road to be able to come around and be able to access in the winter, you know, for emergency calls would also be a big thing for us.
Which station? So I know that we staff, when I say that Lone Peak Public Safety, you staff Alpine and you staff Highland. Which, if there was a call, which station would reply to this area?
Currently?
Yeah.
Highland.
So Highland would... okay.
Highland goes up. We'd have to probably assess, if the connection goes through, we would have to assess who then becomes, if Alpine, Alpine might be the closer station. So we just run it based off of who's the closest, not necessarily on the city boundaries. So.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick because I know we're running short on a little bit of time. Our responsibilities and response, the way we respond is completely different from the fire department. All we're looking for is some type of access for law enforcement to be able to access this particular subdivision from the north side as well. How that's done, I guess, could be left up to you. It's a bit more easier for us to access it through our smaller vehicles as opposed to the big apparatus that the fire department has. But we do believe that that's necessary to have that up there. We've had officers at times at the bottom of that hill trying to figure out how to get up and ask calling for public works to come out and salt the road to traverse that grade. So to be able to access it from a different area would be highly helpful for us.
I just wanted to make one more comment before we finish with this. I think this is a question that we've talked about as a council before. This isn't the first time. I think most of the residents would agree that there needs to be a second access in some format. But I think what we also would like, I think, to make clear is that we need to maximize the safety of all of the residents over convenience for Alpine. This needs to be about safety for Highland residents, much more so than about convenience for Alpine having a way to get through faster.
Council, we have about, we got, why don't we go ahead and take a couple of minutes? If you have questions or things you want to... Go ahead, Scott, do you have something you'd like to say?
I'd just like to second what Brittany said. You know, I'm elected to represent Highland citizens, and we're taking input. We want to look at different solutions. But Highland citizens, their needs come first. I like the people in Alpine. I have a lot of friends up there, but I still think it's important that we take care of our citizens first.
Any other councils like to chime in before we go to the five-minute break, before we start city council? Okay.
I absolutely would like to ask Rob a question. Would that be appropriate?
So Rob is our city attorney, Rob Patterson. Go ahead and...
Would that be appropriate? Okay. Hey, Rob.
Hi.
You can guess my question. There was an implication in one of the presentations that there would be some sort of liability incurred by the municipality, either Alpine or Highland, creating the possibility of some sort of litigation if there were an accident or a tragic injury or death. Is that indeed the case, or was that just speculation?
My understanding of what was presented was there is a risk of, a potential risk of liability that was presented because that connecting road, not the connecting road, the road going up into Viewpoint is above the normal slope that we'd like to see on our roads. There's a chance of, you know, an accident comes down, someone says, well, this road should be less steep. I guess that it is a risk. I see that pretty minimal overall because the road had to go through somewhere. And I was, I would assume when we approved the subdivision, probably about the best place we could get it up into there. And in my view, liability-wise, it seems like we reduce liability by having a way for Highland residents to avoid that slope whenever it is dangerous for, you know, there is a fire, there is snow, something that blocks that road that makes it harder to traverse. It seems like that's what your risk of liability is. And by having a second point that is less steep to circumvent that would reduce that liability. And I'm just speaking just about that slope issue.
Because any, well, quote, improvement, or any change in a road or a thoroughfare or whatever you want to call it, a collector road, according to that statement, would increase liability. And the city is seen as deep pockets, and so that's the first target. And I'm sorry, I'm not trying to sound cold, but I'm just saying, my responsibility is to protect Highland citizens physically and also to protect tax money and insurance rates. And it has to be something that is kind of a collective thought here, so...
I would just, yes, there's always a risk every time we do a road that the cities incur liability. We're opening it up for the public to go on. So yes. So we're looking at the ways to mitigate it, and I think, listen to those who have experience on how to make it the safest subdivision possible. I don't have the experience or training in that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. At this time, it is 6:56. We're going to take a four-minute break. We'll start at 7:00. Once again, we invite all of you to stay in there during this unscheduled public appearances. You're welcome to come up and address the council. There'll be about three minutes per person we'd like to. Everyone that did a comment card, I encourage that's when you come up, is during that time. So we'll now go into a four-minute break.
Thirty seconds, thirty seconds. It is now seven oh four. Thank you for your patience. We will now start the city council meeting for July nineteenth. We will start with our invocation by council member Tim Ball, followed by we have a special flag presentation by the Highland Alpine Troop Twenty.
Our beloved Father, and we are grateful for the opportunity and the blessing to you together as friends and neighbors. We are truly grateful for the great country and treeland, and the city of Highland that you love, and we're grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy. We ask that thou have blessed us by spirit that we will conduct our business in a manner that is conducive to love and harmony, we will make good decisions through inspiration, and that we will come to conclusions that are the best and most of all. And this be great, Lord, and give thanks for it in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Color guard attention. Will the audience please rise? Scout salute. Those not in uniform, please put your right hand over your heart. Color guard forward march. Color guard halt. Color guard cross the colors. Please recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Color guard post the flag of the United States of America. Color guard post the flag of the great state of Utah. Color guard post the Highland City flag. Color guard honor your colors. Color guard return to ranks. Audience, please be seated.
Thank you, Troop Twenty. Just so everyone's aware, we are recording this. We also recorded the work session, but at this time it's also being recorded, and those who are online, they also can make comments during the time when comments are asked to be made. So at this time, it is time for public scheduled, uh, public unscheduled appearances. So those, this would be the time, those at the viewpoint that would like to come up and address the council, they may come up. If you'd like, I have cards. I can call up those who did first, and then we'll, if there's some others after that. I believe I have, is it Amelia Cook? Would you like to come up and address the council? If you'll, please keep your comments down to three minutes. Right here at the microphone around the front, please. If you'll come around and state your full name.
I was thinking, how am I going to look at him?
I'm sorry.
Well, thank you so much for your service. Uh, my name is Amalia Cook. You know, my husband Melvin Cook, we live in Twin Bridges, and we are one of the people affected, or depending on how you look at it, on the property that is going to allow us to be purchased, if that is the case. Um, I just want to express that we love the area we live in, we love our house. One of the things that was very appealing to us is the open space that we have behind us, and the old, and the access to the trails, and we don't want to lose that. You know, we want to keep it. We want to have our own, um, access from our backyard to the open space, you know, and we plead to you to keep that in consideration as you make these divisions, you know, that we'll be able to keep access as we had it when we purchased the house. And that is what I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that, this council, that was item number nine that will be on our agenda. Okay. Uh, I have, is it, I, it's Greg Perk- Parkinson? And I'm sorry if I don't say names right.
Hi, it's Greg Parkinson. Uh, yeah, so I wanted to, uh, talk about the open space. So ten years ago, I was actually on an open space committee here, uh, for Highland, and a few months after that, it just kind of fizzled out. But since then, nothing has been changed. We still have twenty-five percent of the residents in Highland subsidize seventy-five percent of the other residents at twenty dollars a month to take care of the open space, which belongs to all the citizens. So much like the road tax, which is eighteen dollars per household, most of the roads that you're repairing, I will never drive down, but I still feel that it's our responsibility as a city that we all chip in, because at some point, the road that I live on is going to need to have work done on it, and, and we want everybody to pay for it. So I'm not sure why we're stuck in twenty-five percent of the people subsidizing the seventy-five percent when it's all Highland property. It's not my personal property, it's Highland. I happen to live on Catty Lane. There's forty-six homes on that lane. There's a small eight-foot island strip that goes down the center of the road, uh, and it's, uh, it's got some nice trees, some grass, uh, but it comes to forty-six homes at twenty bucks a pop is nine hundred and twenty dollars, and for the year, it's eleven thousand forty dollars to take care of that strip. I'll take care of that strip for half that price, right? Because I don't have to take care of it for six months, and then during the winter, I do nothing. I just let the money come in. Uh, so anyway, I think after fifteen years of living in Highland, I think it's time that, you know, everybody in the city pays for, you know, the upkeep of the city, the upkeep of the roads. We all live here, we're all residents. Um, and so I would hope that, uh, certainly not tonight, but at some point, that this would come on the agenda, and we could take a look to see if we could make that more fair across the board for everyone. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. We'll now hear from, is it Noah Million?
I didn't plan to speak today, so apologies if I'm a little shaky and stuttery. I'm a Viewpoint resident. I'm the youngest child of Dan Milliron, who presented for Viewpoint. Um, and while I was here, I was just struck by a memory. In high school, I would go out four or five times a week to play board games with my friends in their basements and drink soda. And I just remembered every time, four to five times a week, that we left and entered that neighborhood, I would tell my friends, "Drive slow. Kids are safe here." They go out and they play on the streets at all times of day. And I worry that if we have a connecting road, that people won't have a neighbor who knows about the children, who knows to drive slow, who knows to be extra safe, extra cautious. I'm worried for our kids. Thank you.
And is it Ambria, is it Banagas? Have you seen that?
Hello, it's Ambria Banagas. It's a weird last name and weird first name. Um, anyway, I have five kids. I live in Viewpoint. Um, I have teenagers all the way down to a three-year-old. My kids love to play in the neighborhood. They love to play outside. All the time, they're always crossing the street. I have teenagers that actually ride the hill, down the hill to go to Walmart, and then they come back up. So I am concerned about extra, um, traffic on the hill as well as throughout the whole neighborhood. And as many times as I tell my kids, "Don't go out there, don't, or don't cross the street alone," they do. They just, I try so hard to teach them, but my three-year-old does it. So I'm really concerned about that. I'm also concerned about the curves, because when cars are parked on the curves, you cannot see like a kid coming out. Like, I don't know how to explain it, but if there's a car parked on the curb and your kid's coming out behind the car, the oncoming cars cannot see it, and the curves just make it extremely difficult. Um, I'm also concerned about the expansion that's going to be continuing to happen, the growth in Alpine. It's not even completely built out, so is that going to affect the traffic on our road? Um, those are probably my main concerns. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully I got this name right. Steve Brown. Is Steve here? I do not see a Steve Brown. Okay. Yeah, I know. This last one's Wilson is, Austin or Oden? Oden? Wilcox, Wilson?
I'll do better next time. Austin Wilcox. Um, so as a parent of four kids, we live at the end of Park Drive, not all the way at the end, maybe three quarters. So the through traffic, especially in our stretch of the road, is very, very low, because you've only got a handful of houses past you that are trying to commute past our house. Um, connecting the road, we're very worried would change that drastically, because now you'd have a lot more drivers coming through. It's a known thing, our kids at night, they don't want to go to bed, because they know all their friends are out until eleven o'clock at night playing night games. It's just a thing the kids in the neighborhood do. They're out running up and down the trails, crisscross the road, biking down the middle of the road with lights on their bikes. Um, it's a very active, um, neighborhood with kids, especially in the evening. Um, I was concerned, I just wanted to bring up two points, I guess, that I'm not, I appreciate the city, your, your traffic study, um, was suggesting that yes, there would be more congestion, there would be more traffic. I'm afraid that it's actually undercounting what would be the problem. Um, when I looked through the proposition for the, the traffic study, it checked at Healy Road, which is just north of our neighborhood and just south of our neighborhood. Um, but if you look at a map of Alpine, two-thirds of Alpine, coming down Alpine Boulevard, drains through that area, turns onto Ridge Road. Ridge Road, before they ever get down to Healy, uh, Healy Boulevard, the most direct route out of Alpine is down Ridge Road. So all that two-thirds of traffic coming through there, I don't think, I don't know that they were counted or not. Um, and so I think that would have a much bigger impact than what was represented in the traffic study, because you're only counting the third of Alpine that's below Ridge Road, actually is currently taking the, the Healy Road around. Um, everyone north of them would skip that whole intersection and cut light of that. Um, also, the number of cars I think that would turn east, I think is undercounted, because if you're already pushed west by the existing road pattern, you would go straight across Timpanogas Highway. You wouldn't turn east towards the canyon, or take Canyon, North Canyon Road. Um, but if you, you can do a quick Google map search, if you're starting from the bottom of our hill, um, then your fastest route is to turn east and to head up in, up towards Canyon Road. Um, so I think that, you know, we discussed that the percentage of cars turning east was actually not that big a deal. I think if you're, if you're able to cut through our neighborhood, and you're able to get to the bottom of that hill, um, that is the fastest route. So I think the number of cars that would come through there for those two reasons, I think are underaccounted in the official, or the traffic study, potentially. Um, and as a biker, I bike up that hill every day coming home from work. I would love to see fewer cars racing past, because they're a lot faster than I am, um, on that hill. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Trent Pedersen?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Trent Pedersen. I've been a Highland resident in Viewpoint for over fifteen years. I have twenty-five plus years in law enforcement, and I've been a licensed attorney, uh, for over twenty-five years in the state of Utah and also the state of California. I have several concerns, and I would like to just lay them out, and also I'd like you to discuss this with the city attorney. I don't fault you folks or the city attorney or fire for the situation that we're in. My concern, and it goes to the liability question that Mr. Ball put forth, this subdivision was approved in violation of the fire code, in violation of the steepness of the entry coming up. It does not meet the width requirements for a collector street. It does not have a turn lane, so when people back into the lane or trying to turn into a driveway, there's no way to do that without blocking the traffic. The angles are too sharp, and I don't fault anyone here. We're, we're all trying to address the situation together. We all know that we need access for fire and police. As a public safety officer for twenty-five plus years, I've been where these gentlemen are. I understand, but there's ways to do it without jeopardizing our children's lives. Additionally, from a liability perspective, the subdivision was built with all of the pathways going directly to the street, and they cross the street. There's nothing, there's no crosswalks currently, but there's nothing you can do on blind corners to stop. That's where the subdivision was approved. That's how it's directed. My next concern, we are de facto at a collector street as it is. It's my understanding that UDOT will not allow a traffic light where we are currently connected, because it's too close to the planned traffic light at the connection of AF Canyon and State Road ninety-two. Therefore, the residents legally might, in my personal opinion, be able to stop the city from making this to be a collector road, because you can't put a light there, because state law and DOT regulations preclude it. The city engineer maybe can address what the DOT limitations are, how, what the distances are between a state road, uh, but it's my understanding that UDOT will not allow Highland City to put a light at Park Drive. Therefore, the residents can't address the issue of a collector street, and it's based on the numbers we saw tonight. We're already at the level of a collector street. It would only get worse. I spoke with the forest ranger last week, and the UNTWassatch Cache National Forest is the second most visited of all of the national forests, more than Yellowstone, more than Arches. Fifteen to twenty nights, I cannot access my home, because the canyon traffic has passed my intersection. That needs to be addressed. It's a public safety issue. We have people darting out, going around the emergency lane, driving down the middle of the road. That intersection is a problem, and it needs to be addressed. Um, my last issue, the traffic study does not address our intersection. It doesn't address that that's where the Public Works Department is, the snow removal services. It's a bus stop. I request that this study be done at our intersection during school in a month, and we'll get real numbers that will be reflective. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Heidi, starts with a V. Ben, Val. Okay, yes, Heidi. And I'm sorry, is Heidi here? Okay. Cynthia Pedersen? You okay? Okay. Is it Kirk, or Peter? Is it Kil- Kilgari? Peter Kilgar. I also live in Viewpoint. And, and I just want to point out, um, that the gentleman that was here from the engineering firm, said they did the traffic study in twenty nineteen. Since twenty nineteen, COVID happened, and when COVID happened, people started shopping online a lot more. I don't know about you, but we did, and a lot of people we know did. And we have, what I would say is a significant, I don't have studies to shoot, prove it, but a significant increase in delivery vehicles in our neighborhood every day. Uh, some houses getting two or three deliveries, separate deliveries every day. And on top of that, there's service vehicles. So the study sounded like it was just talking about residents coming and going, but there's a lot more traffic than just residents. And if, if the road went through up to Alpine, those same service vehicles and delivery vehicles would be going, using that, that path as well. So I just wanted to point that out. I think everyone in the neighborhood is really mostly interested in safety. And like, I'll second it. There's a lot of kids in the neighborhood, and my grandkids come and visit, and there's right across the street is this, a wonderful playground. And you get a two-year-old or a four-year-old, they don't think, they don't think, they just don't, right? They just see a swing set and bolt for it. Uh, as much as we try to tell them, "Look for, look both ways, go with somebody bigger," they're two, right? So they're four. They do what two and four-year-olds do. So anyway, I just want you to keep in mind, like, I'm, I'm grateful that you are interested in the safety of Highland residents, and so are we. Thanks. Deborah Pinster?
Hi, I'm Deborah Pinster, and I live on Park Drive as well, and we live on one of the turns. So I have, um, young teenage drivers, and I constantly am telling them, "I have the thirty years of experience. You do not." So even when I'm pulling out of my driveway, and we're right next to the swings, so we have the swings right there, and then the house on the other side. We are right across the street from the Kilders, so their kids, grandkids are coming across. Um, I can look both ways, and I can back out, and by the time I'm ready to put my car into drive, there is a car behind me. So I can't see on some of those turns, and they're not speeding. They've just now come around the corner, and they are right behind me. Um, and luckily, we do usually travel fairly safely in our neighborhood. Um, that's the other thing that I'm hoping is going to come up. There are no speed limit signs actually on, in our neighborhood. There's one at the bottom of the hill on your way up, and there's one at the top of the hill on the way down. But other than that, there are no speed limit signs actually in the neighborhood. So I, my youngest is fourteen, so I will have another new driver. So my concern, of course, kids, we're always watching both ways. One's looking one way, I'm looking the other way as we're backing out, because we're looking for kids and cars. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And then Dan Milleron?
I won't need the full three minutes. From the work session before, I was really thrilled, and my heart was warm, to hear that everybody who spoke, um, including the, uh, emergency officials, everybody is interested in getting another connection into the neighborhood. The neighborhood is interested in getting another connection into the neighborhood. That isn't even the question. Now, we're way beyond that question. We all want that connection. The question remains, what type of connection? And we have, I can think of four ingredients that we can combine together to achieve exactly what the emergency officials want, what the city engineer wants, what the lawyers want, and that is, here are the four ingredients. We can pass a city ordinance that says, "No through traffic." You'll get fined, and then the cops can sit, uh, the police can sit there and write tickets all day long for all the people who ignore that until the message gets out. We can do, use the breakaway pylons. We can use cobblestones, and we can use vegetation. We can use any combination of those four items. So we have lots of options available, none of which, uh, of those four ingredients require a complete public throughway that drills this shortcut, this very dangerous shortcut, right through the Viewpoint neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Since this is still time from unscheduled public appearances, is there anyone else would like to come up and address the council on any item? Please just come up and just state your name. It can be, now, we are going to be having public hearings on item number four, number five, number six, and so those items will have their own public hearing.
Okay, so hi, I'm Matt Lamont. I also live on Park Drive, right next to some of the other people who have come up here. Um, we are actually at the very kind of sharpest point of that radius. Um, like was said, we back out, and somebody is right on our tail. That's somebody who is a neighbor, who understands what the curve is, and they are going slow at that point, as has already been said. Uh, people who are in the neighborhood are invested in, for the most part, going slow through this neighborhood. People who don't understand what's going on in this neighborhood are not invested in those kind of safety concerns. Um, a couple of things that were brought up earlier in the meeting, um, somebody had, uh, based an opinion saying, to me, it sounded like an opinion, that we consider this a local road rather than a collector road. And I wondered if that was based on opinion or based on the actual data that was presented, because to me, based on the data, when you look at that, it has to be considered a collector road. Um, somebody else mentioned, I believe it was in our traffic study, that they lived on a road that could also handle the same kind of traffic or increased numbers. Um, but I wondered if they lived on a road that has, that is as narrow as ours, that actually doesn't allow two-way traffic to come through when we have cars parked on the side of the road, and that also has the tight radius of turns that we have in our, you know, it's one thing to live in a neighborhood that has nice, long, broad, straight streets. It's another thing to have the situation that we have. Um, it was also mentioned that our community was built out of code, and it needs to be remedied, but as, uh, Dan Milliron brought up, we have a number of code discrepancies in our community, that if this road was upgraded to collector status, that would be also out of code, and would the city then be responsible for remedying all of those code violations, as far as, as the radius, the, the hill, everything like that. Um, you know, every day I go to work, somebody had mentioned, there's no option for, I think it mentioned a barricade. Every day I go to work, I have to badge in to the parking structure that has one of those lift gates. Um, we talked about the, the breakaway barriers. Um, is there any option that could be considered where, you know, for emergency usage, or even that would have access for the community, it wouldn't have to be a full gated community, but even a, a lift- but even a, a lift gate that could be badged into that during times where maintenance is being performed or for any safety things could be left up, but otherwise only select individuals would be allowed to badge into the neighborhood from that other access point. You know, and are there any safety or maintenance issues that would not be able to be addressed by that kind of access into the neighborhood? And lastly, as everybody has pointed out, the changes that are being asked to be made as far as if we make this a through access, access will completely change the personality of this neighborhood that everybody fell in love with when they bought houses in this neighborhood. As far as a quiet neighborhood that kids can go out and ride their bikes in the street, you know, cross, cross the street on the walking paths, where we can send our kid down the street to our neighbor's house and not live in fear of somebody coming around the road. And we talked a little bit about liability. If somebody is hit.
Can hurry up and finish that, please.
If somebody is hit in the neighborhood or if somebody gets in an accident going down the hill, is the city actually liable for somebody, something like that? If somebody decides to sue the city for those code violations that are existing? Thank you.
Thank you. I believe there's a couple others over here. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Karma Campuzano and we were the tenth house in, in Viewpoint in 2006. And at the time, I had children at home going to Highland Elementary even. So it's been a long time that we've lived there. When I first moved in, anytime I was outside, I would see a car come racing to the end because I live on the corner of the cul-de-sac and the end of Park Drive. And I would see a car come racing, thinking that they found a shortcut. And they would screech to a halt and then go back into the cul-de-sac and whip a U-turn around and not even stop and then go, go the other way. And that happened over and over every time I was outside. And I was also interested, I know that they talked about having speed limit signs. It's twenty-five at the bottom of the hill. I would be interested in it being lowered to twenty because even, I looked up, my husband was driving around that corner where the Lamonts live and he was going twenty-five and I felt like I was too fast. There was a little girl going across on a scooter and things and it scared me, you know, that he was going too fast and he was going the speed limit, trying to get here on time. And so I'm just really, really concerned. I know all the children because I work with them at church and it just, it's so frightening to me to think of that happening and like the Kilgers, my grandchildren come because it's a level surface and they love to ride their little bikes and things in our neighborhood. And so I'm just really, really worried about their safety.
My name's Burke Alder and I live on Park Drive. I live in a section that three hundred and sixty-five days a year, it's blocked for forty-five feet with the sun during these major traffic times that they just mentioned. So much so that I've been there when a car has crashed right into another car parked on the side of the road. It's forty-five seconds of complete blackness. And I also come from the city where we lost somebody. It was a moved bus stop. And this little girl got hit. So it just takes one, one move. I think this forty-five feet of block three hundred and sixty-five is super dangerous. Because also the forty-five feet crosses where there's a major crossway for the kids to cross to the park. So it's, it's a very traffic place for kids to ride their bikes, scooters. A lot of us as parents, we teach our kids every day, hey, look both ways. If you were to talk to my three-year-old or my seven-year-old, they would say, hey dad, I look both ways. It just takes one little change to the positive to make this not a, an exit for Alpine. To echo your, I'm grateful for your service, to stand up and stick up for, you know, making an awesome city. I love Highland. I'll be here a long time. I've lived here for twelve years on that road. I'm grateful for these neighbors who spent a lot of time coming up with this proposal for safety and that forty-five, if you ever want to go and sit up and go on that road, on that curve at sunset, you'll see what I'm talking about. Forty-five feet crossed right with a crosswalk. So I think the increased flow will cause damage and I hope we don't lose a life. So thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else would like to come up?
My name is Cynthia Patterson. I did have one comment after all. One of the things that I don't know that has been discussed, but you know that the school buses can't make their way up the hill and so we have that school bus stop at the bottom. And it's not just during peak hours, but several times a day when the bus stops and the kids are coming down, not only do you have cars that are coming and turning around in that area, but you have cars that'll stop at the side of the road and some kid will jump in or a couple kids will come, jump in and then they'll turn around. And you have a whole host of kids walking up and down this road and usually they're four or five across, some of them in the streets, some of them on the sidewalk. And that hill, to have all those extra cars when all those kids are stuck, they have, they have no choice but to go down to the bottom of the hill to catch the bus. And so we already have a safety issue with them down on the main highway and with all those cars sometimes parked along the road and sometimes turning around. And it's not just during peak hours, it's several times a day based on the different starts and stops of the schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Brad Colton from Viewpoint Neighborhood. One topic that we haven't discussed, I don't think, is the high school and the high school traffic in the morning. Right now, you have tons of kids that go to Lone Peak High School, they go down Alpine Boulevard and then they, they all pretty much cut over on Ridge and then they make a left-hand turn to go to the high school. As you know, that when they make a left-hand turn, that road backs up quite a bit. So I can guarantee you that there are going to be a hundred kids, two hundred kids that are going to take that as a shortcut to Lone Peak because they cut through the Viewpoint Neighborhood and then all they have to do is make a right-hand turn without a light and then they have to go through, you know, they make a left-hand turn at the light going to the high school. So I, I'm guessing that that was not factored into the study. But I also would imagine that even though we love our dear teenagers, that we would all agree that teenage drivers going to high school are probably the most dangerous drivers that we have to worry about. So that is, I think, a mega factor we, we should think about. Thank you.
Any other unscheduled public appearances?
Good evening, Major and Council members. I appreciate your willingness to serve us and to think of our safety. You know, we, we can talk about engineering studies and the lack of reliability, but we can also see the real-life experiences that we experience every day. I pray that we don't have liability, that we will all be liable for, and I'm talking about life. So I, I plead with you, each member of this council, to think about the lives. And I know there's, that we can have, find a solution, maybe the extra road, I don't know, or maybe limited entrance and, you know, access to our neighborhood. But the bottom line is our children. We don't want to lose a life. I thank you again for everything you do and I know that you're on, on our side. So I, I thank you.
Hi, I'm John Peachey. I live in Viewpoint on Park Drive. I think the bottom line is there's a lot more than numbers are at stake. As you've heard from the residents, we care about our neighborhood, we care about our safety. And to that point, residents already attempt to mitigate traffic flow and I don't know that that's the best thing. You know, the little, you know, little green kid things that have the flags. People put those in the middle of the road and it actually creates more danger than, than there currently is. And I fear that as traffic increases, there's going to be more self-mitigation of traffic flow in that neighborhood. Because as you can tell, we're passionate about this. We do not want more flow in our neighborhood and I'm not saying, you know, I'm going to go out there and do anything myself, but it, it happens, right? People take things into their own hands and I'm afraid that that's usually not always the best solution. So I think that it's incumbent upon, you know, the city council and the city to, you know, consider everything that was spoken tonight and, and please help us find a safe solution for this. Thank you.
My name's Randall Benakis. I thank the city council for hearing us and the, and the safety professionals that are here. Kind of one thing that I had mentioned at the other meeting that we had that I just wanted to reiterate is, safety is obviously the most important thing. And something else to consider is if Patterson had, let's just say hypothetically, had chosen to delay their construction by thirty years, ten years, fifteen years, I don't believe we would, we wouldn't be having this conversation. So something to consider when you're hearing this matter, if the, with what Mr. Spencer has said about really needing that second access, not necessarily a one that has pylons and stuff. Would that interest be there if Patterson hadn't kind of done that? I'm not blaming Patterson, he can do what he wants, it's private property, but I'm just saying like, let's think about the weightiness of that matter is Patterson's deciding to build and now all of a sudden, now everybody wants that second entrance full-time for safety and other things. But independent of that, we've all been living up, I've been up there for six years, many people have been up there a lot longer. We're perfectly fine the way things are. Not to say we don't want safety vehicles in there, but if Patterson isn't building, you guys aren't really coming to us forcing that, that connection. I think that's something very important to, to consider. So we're not anti-safety, we're just saying it, it, I just want to give it its weight. And then the second thing I wanted to mention is, so second Karma's comments, I initially, about a year ago or so, tried to push a measure, didn't get very far, but this is motivating me even more to really address the speeding in the neighborhood. I had a police officer come up and do the little sign thing, the radar detector or whatnot. Speeding is an absolute issue because of the curviness of the road. Twenty-five is absolutely too fast. So to Dev telling us if we can also be considering just an overall speed, so that's already a problem for our neighborhood, open this thing up to everybody else, that's exacerbating the issue. So thank you for your time.
Is there anything, anyone else? Is there anyone online? Aaron, do we have anyone online for public comment? There's a lady on it. No, okay.
Hi, I'm Rachel Milliron. I'm one of Dan's daughters. I just wanted to, again, thank the council for all of your work on this, especially Brittany. I, I did want to urge you guys to consider Trent Peterson's comments about the liability issues and the fact that the neighborhood isn't up to code. I also, everyone's saying we want to protect the kids. I do too. I also want to protect my dad, who is getting up there in years and I'm going to be in trouble for saying that later. But I don't want to be hit by a car either when I go up to that neighborhood. So again, thank you for everything that you guys are doing and please, please pick the safest option.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments at this time? Saying that, we now close the meeting. At this time, council, I want to take a little bit of prerogative. We have still the engineer here from Hell's Engineering. Is there, yo, is there any questions while we have all the residents here or things that you still want to ask questions of staff, the, the traffic thing or better clarification on anything, going with the Viewpoint subdivision connection?
I, I just wanted to have one clarification. I know that the bus is unable to go up that road and I just would love to know if we, if that connection does go through, would the bus be able to then service that neighborhood or would it still be having to stay at the bottom of the road?
You're looking at me?
Yeah, I'm basically looking at you because I feel like you know everything.
I know the city was looking into it. I don't know if you've gotten that's your back, baby.
Yeah, so the neighborhood was originally slated to go to Alpine Elementary. That was the original plan, but because of the road situation, obviously, we didn't. That would be a school board decision, but they have considered it before. So my guess is they would consider it again. And we need to recognize that is city property at the bottom of the hill where that school bus stop is.
Any other input or anything the council feels like they, they need or anything else to just? Now, here's the good question, the question is probably really to come up, what happens after this? So we had a work session, we cannot make a decision on this. We've advocated, as you can tell with the developer, to try to have a little bit of a U-shape. I think as a council, if we want to make a decision on this, we'll need to put it on an agenda item to actually make an action item. If we're going to make any of the recommendations that some of the residents have said, if there's some other things. So this will probably come up as we see a future action item the next, it might not be on the second, it might be the following one, so we just kind of understand what Alpine, the market's changing, we don't know, you know, you've mentioned that Patterson, I don't know if you noticed one thing he, he mentioned, it kind of surprised me, he had quarter and third acres approved on this twenty or thirty years ago. He let that expire and now he's down to half acre lots. It can be with the market changing, they can pull their application. I'm not saying they're going to, but we, we probably want to see a little bit what Alpine's trying to do. I would recommend the council, we have relationships with the Alpine city council members that maybe we can kind of reach out to them, share your concerns with what they might be proposing coming in for that subdivision. And then once we know what they propose, if they propose a straight or things that way, then that's probably when the Highland City Council then says, okay, now what do we need to do, understanding what the decisions happen in Alpine. Just trying to help you understand the process. This subdivision lies in Alpine. It is up to Alpine's decision on how they design that subdivision. Once the road hits Highland, Highland has the say what to do once that road hits Highland. And so the council can then make a decision on if it be mitigating circumstances with some traffic calming, if it be anything that's been mentioned to try to, you know, put some ballers there, that will be left up to the council, it will come in a fut- future time. So anything else the council needs to input on this?
Just adding to that though, there's nothing that prevents our citizens from going to their planning commission or their city council and express their concerns because the decisions they make up there impacts our neighbors.
And I had mentioned that, I think, when we met with some of the residents. You need to probably, if you have some friends in Alpine, it is true, if you're a Highland resident calling up in the Alpine, they'll listen to you, but they like to listen to their residents too. So if you have some friends in Alpine, you might want to see if they'll help you chime in up there. We can try to do things as a city council. It is true, what we are hearing back from Alpine, they want the road straight. They have recommended that this road is straight coming through. We, we've tried to advocate, the developer seems to be amenable as we heard tonight, to having it be a U-shaped road. And then as a council, you need to also be voices out there, that, you know, go to the planning commissions, go to the city council meetings, it does matter to have you show up. And to make sure you keep shining, chining with us. And Alpine, it takes three city council members, just remember, so count your numbers. If you got them, it takes three. So you don't have to get all five, you just have to get three. Same as our city council, you only have to get three.
So Mayor, I would say that that's one thing that I think I have tried to explain throughout this process and maybe not done very well with my neighbors is, one of the reasons that I've been so adamant that we need to work with Alpine is because their decision right now has a time limit on it, right? Like they're hearing this item at their planning commission and then their city council. We don't know how long they'll take to build it and I think it's really important that we've started the conversation now, but it's not as, it's not an emergency situation for us to decide what we do right now. We have time to make a good decision, gather all the information, make sure we have all the options. So I just think that's important to know that what we do is not as time-sensitive right now as what, as what they are doing.
Anything else from the council on this? I, I appreciate all those who have attended. We invite you still to stay for the rest of the city council meeting. At this time, we'll now move on to item number two, which is a presentation on the fling preview. I believe we have Miranda to give us that.
Good evening, council. Hopefully, we can shift gears here for a second, not think about difficult decisions and just fun events we have coming up in the city. I believe I've had the chance to meet most of you, whether it be in previous positions or since I started planning events, but I'm Miranda Domann. I'm the new civic event coordinator and fling director. I'm not sure if you've already seen the Highland Fling magazine in your mailboxes, but I brought some tonight if any of you would like one to flip through as I talk about a few events. Would anyone like one? Uh-uh.
I got one in the mail, it just came in the mail in the last couple of days. Right. That's true. I would like one, yes. I'm sorry, maybe we should, we should have had you do your presentation first to try to put the fling.
Well, as I'm sure you're aware, with the timing that I took Well, as I'm sure you're aware, with the timing that I took over for Corinne and events, and with the timing of my own darn wedding in May, our window to plan the Highland Fling was shortened. And so we have fewer sponsors this year, and fewer events, though most of our traditional events are still in place. But I have done what I can with the time we've had, and I hope that this year's fling is able to be enjoyed just as much as any year's fling has been. As you can see on the logo, this year's, the 2022 Highland Fling theme is the great outdoors. This theme was carefully chosen by Corinne and the Fling Committee, and will be incorporated into many of our events this year. The first event of the Highland Fling is the kickoff, and the kickoff this year includes an OHV, or off-highway vehicle show. I have to give Tyler a shout out for teaching me the OHV acronym, as I struggle to learn, or to figure out what to call this event. But this event will have an OHV show, where residents have been, and hopefully will continue to register their razors, canams, Wildcats, four-wheelers, dirt bikes, et cetera. And we'll have a car show-like show, show with off-highway vehicles, as well as outdoor yard games, music, and BYU ice cream. If you know anyone or any residents with these type of vehicles, I would appreciate it if you would encourage them to register an ROHV show. On Tuesday, August 2nd, we will have service projects and the baby celebration, as well as the horseshoe tournament. The service projects will be in the morning, and we are tying quilts that will be donated to shelters, mother programs, and refugee stations. Later in the afternoon, with the baby celebration, it's been taken over by a new volunteer chair. Her name is Stephanie Thiel. She's a young mother in our community, and she's done a great job. There'll be several activities for the babies ages newborn to 36 months to participate in, as well as goodie bags for them to take home. And then that evening, like I said, we have the horseshoe tournament, which is led by Roy Buehler, who is a world's champion horseshoe thrower. And it's a small event, but it's always thoroughly enjoyed by those who attend. On Wednesday, we have the kids' night, just here at the Splash Pad Park. It's run by the library. There will be snow cone vendors, and several activities set up all throughout the Splash Pad to be attended to. Thursday, we have our traditional backyard garden tours. There's three homes throughout the city to be toured, and Carrie Wise, our beautification committee chair, has set up those homes for us. Friday is a big day for the Highland Fling. We have the Play Day Rodeo, as well as our disc golf tournament, the youth movie night, and the strongman competition. The Play Day Rodeo takes place at the North County Equestrian Park. It includes a stick horse race for any young cowboys or cowgirls who would like to participate. There will be a small petting zoo, and barrel racing and poles for the more experienced riders. The disc golf tournament is as popular as ever. We have people who travel out of state to come join the Highland Fling Disc Golf Tournament. It's up at the Beacon Hills Disc Golf Course. We also have the Friday Night Youth Movie Night, which is sponsored by our Highland Youth City Council. The youth have done a great job with this event. They came up with the idea all on their own, and have been helping prepare for the event as well. They chose to watch the movie Mega Mind, and are encouraging their friends, the fellow youth, to bring hammocks, to watch the movie from the trees, or to bring a blanket and just watch it from the grass. They will also be handing out snow cones and popcorn as a part of their event. Then, as almost all of you know, Saturday is a big day for the fling as well. We have the grand parade Saturday morning, followed by the vendor fair, Kids Zone, and entertainment all day long. I spoke with Chief Patton yesterday, and we have arranged for the council to ride on top of the fire truck during the parade, if you would like.
Ride or drive?
So...
Right.
Chief Patton is...
Rider. He's in the hall. He doesn't care. Go drive. Perfect. Thank you. Excited for the opportunity.
I also have thousands of pieces of candy for you. Though I do have a lot, I still encourage you to save the candy so we don't run out at the end.
Is that, did everyone just hear what she says? We have a lot of people at the end of the parade, that everyone runs out of candy. We gotta keep some candy for the end.
Gotta save the candy for the kids at the end. As you are probably aware, there have been several incidents with parades in our state and throughout the country this year. I'd like you to know that I met with Sergeant Wagstaff at the Police Department, as well as with our volunteer parade chairs, Audrey Moore and Doug Courtney, this past week. And we have took over our safety measures, and we've implemented new safety precautions so that we can avoid any tragic incidents this year.
So let me just ask you, because I was, you mentioned we're throwing candy. To me, that seems like one of the danger areas, is that those who throw candy, and, you know, us included, we don't get it far enough away from the vehicles, so kids are running out. Have there been any adjustments that way?
As far as I'm aware in our policy, we didn't change anything concerning that. That has been a concern in the past years. We do have volunteers along the parade route that help with the flow of the parade, as well as keeping kids out of the road, because that is a danger. The main safety precautions we have changed or enforced this year are, once you're outside of a vehicle, if you're in the parade, you're not allowed to get inside a vehicle. Once you're inside a vehicle, you're not allowed to get outside of a vehicle. If you're throwing candy in a vehicle, you have to be sitting down. Those, that was the cause of some incidents this year.
So if we're on the fire truck, we're throwing candy, we have to stay sitting down?
Sitting down, or have something that's up to waist level. So you don't fall out of the vehicle, is the idea. Yeah. But we're trying to do all we can to make this as safe as possible. We know with thousands of people, and just a few running it, it can be difficult. But we are doing what we can. And the police officers we will have on shift during the parade will be aware and trying to help and encourage safety precautions as well. Our entertainment lineup this year includes a reptile show, a magician, several brands that are mostly local, and then our headliner band, Sonic Groove. There are cover bands that'll be playing songs from the past several decades. We're excited to have them join us. And after the concert, there will be a 17-minute fireworks show, hopefully one of the Highlands best. All in all, it's looking like it's going to be a great year for the Highland Fling. I'm excited to celebrate the great community of Highland, and the residents that make it great. I've created a schedule, which I emailed you all yesterday afternoon. If you can sign up for different events at the fling, I'd appreciate it, so I can know who to plan on where. But of course, I'd love to have you at any event. So if you're free, please come to all. I do have your shirts. They're in the process of being made. They're almost done. So I'll send you an email as soon as they are, and they'll be here at City Hall. I'm grateful for your support, and especially for the support of the Highland City staff. They have been nothing but encouraging and kind, as of taking on this new challenge, planning the fling. Are there any questions you have about the fling this year?
Who's the grand marshal? It's in the brochure.
It is Kathy Jolly, isn't it?
Kathy and Doug Jolly. We weren't able, they unfortunately were on a Caribbean cruise when we were planning the magazine. So we weren't able to get an article about them in the magazine, but there will be an insert in the August newsletter about Kathy and Doug.
I think most of you know Kathy Jolly, that is taught up at Timberline as a music director, and she does our adult choir here.
The Highland Choral.
Yeah, our adult choir for choral here.
Highland Choral Singers.
There you go. Thank you.
She's also the director of that, so.
Thank you, Miranda. You've done a great job so far. And I know the youth councils love spending time with you, and you've done a great job engaging them. So thanks for all your work.
Thanks.
Just since we have the council here, the plan is, and I talked with Miranda, we're going to have a city council booth next to the city booth. And I believe we're planning to kind of highlight what we're doing there at the Mountain Ridge Park. We're going to encourage, that's where if we have council sign up to be there, I'm sorry, what? We can have a QR code. We can talk about that. But it'd be a good way to engage with some residents. We might have some other documents, if it be about budgets, or about the trail plan, or road plans. We have asked, we might have a poster there about our updated road plan to kind of get it. And if we have trails, sometimes people ask some of those questions, we can kind of help answer. And so get with me if we need to get what we need to get poster-wise. And then is everyone here on Saturday to be in the parade?
Yeah, and I'll have swag cups for you to be able to draw people in at your booth, and free water bottles.
So if Brittany's driving the fire truck, as I understand?
It's going to take both, I realize it's going to take both hands, so I won't be able to throw candy.
She's gonna, Brittany's gonna be driving your fire truck.
Chief, you were gone, we've already decided.
We decided. We had a unanimous vote.
She thought, she said she won't.
She's gonna sacrifice.
I'm not getting caught if you're driving.
We're going to work on our CDO.
It's gonna be great. My plan is to be driving, and while driving, lifting the ladder all the way up.
And Kim's...
Yeah, that meets all safety precautions.
It's a running job. Brittany's been trying to drive this fire truck, I don't know for how many years. I think you still have to go, does it still have to go down the pole? Is that right, chief? For her to go ride, drive the truck, she has to go down the pole? Okay.
Well, if there are any more questions, thank you for your time. I'm excited to see you at the fling.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We'll now move on to item number three, which is our consent items. We only have one consent item, which is approval of the meeting minutes from May 17th. Actually, I'm sorry, it's the, we have a, we have our meeting minutes from May 17th, which is work session, and June 6, 2022.
Mayor, I'll make the motion. I move that the Highland City Council approve the meeting minutes from May 17th, 2022, and the city council work session from June 6, 2022.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Scott, second by Sarah. We all ready to vote? That passes five to zero. We will now move on to a public hearing item, which is a tax amendment on home occupations. Kelly, we have you down for that.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. For this proposed tax amendment, just a quick brief, on May 17th, this was briefly presented to the council, along with several other tax amendments. Just giving you all a quick summary as to why it was going to be coming to the council, and at the time, no objections nor concerns were raised. A little bit of background, just the definition of a home occupation is any occupation conducted within a dwelling and carried on by persons residing in the dwelling. Now, this doesn't include just typical phone and computer work that you do as a typical resident. Anything over that would be considered a home occupation. And something to note, Section 3614, in-home occupations currently in code, just references to them being allowed in R-140, R-120, and the A1 zones. And since then, we've added the R-130 zone, as well as other residential areas in our PD zones, which gave cause to update it along with the rest of our development code. The proposed amendment allows for, rather than calling out specific zones, just allowing a home occupation in any residential unit. And then we're also, the application process in the development code versus municipal code was a little just inconsistent. And so we're updating it to match what's in the municipal code, because that's what we've been following. And then there's also a clarification added to the residential uses for flex zones in the town center overlay. Just because with Highland Vista, it came up that there's actually, it's listed as a permitted use for retail and, like first, like first-story retail. And so we're calling it out, saying anything that was developed as residential has to stay residential, with the exception of home occupations. And if that were to change, it would have to have a separate approval from the council. So it's not recognized as a permitted use without council approval anymore. But the proposal is to fix that, to keep it residential. We did send out the appropriate public hearing notices for the public hearing to be held, and we haven't received any resident correspondence. Oh, this is an old, that's meant to be deleted. Planning Commission action, the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on June 28th, and they recommended approval with a 6-0 vote. And these are our two motions. There's either the motion to approve, or motion to deny, or if the council had any changes they wanted to make. That's something that y'all can discuss.
Kelly, I add one question, kind of for clarification. So, in the past, it's been R-140, R-120, and different things, home occupations. And I understand, you're bringing it to R-130, and also the PD zone. So on the east side of Ridgeview, the Borger people are going to rent a lot of those structures. And so are the people that rent those, are they able to have a home occupation as well, according to this ordinance?
Uh huh, yes. If it's rented out as the whole unit, yeah.
What, what would keep a company from renting it, declaring they're a resident, and renting a company out of one of those rental units? Anything?
What would you, I'm sorry, can you recall that?
Well, I'm just saying, what would keep someone whose only purpose for renting that residence, and to run a business, do you know what I mean? So it's a company that comes in, says, oh, we're renting it, and, but they want to do really a business. Do you see what I'm trying to say?
To have the home occupation license, they do have to live there, and so it can't just be a location that they run their business. They have to be the resident of the dwelling unit.
So there's kind of safeguards to keep businesses from renting those areas, just to do a business?
Just to use that as, yes, that's correct.
Any other questions before we have a public hearing? Seeing none, we'll now open this up for a public hearing, for anyone to like to come up and address this item about the home occupation permits. Seeing none, we close that public hearing and move it back to council, either for a motion or further discussion?
I'd like to make a motion, if that's okay. I move that the city council accept the findings and approve the proposed amendment to Sections 3-614 and 3-4716 relating to home occupation licenses.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
That was Sarah. Motion is by Kim, second by Sarah. Are we ready for a vote?
And can we have a little bit of discussion?
Yeah, if you'd like to have a discussion before the vote.
So, Kelly, do you see any downside to opening this up to every residents in Highland?
To my understanding, Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, by state code, any residential unit has the right to run a home occupation. So it's basically, state code already enforces that, so we'd have to abide by that anyway. And so it's just updating our code to meet what we're already required to follow.
But you don't anticipate any downsides? It's always hard to predict, isn't it?
I'm like, in my opinion, I don't, I don't know.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion before we go to vote? Okay, let's go ahead and move the vote. That passes five to zero. We now move on to item number five, which is a public hearing in ordinance. It's a tax amendment concerning retaining walls. Kelly, we have you down for that one again.
Thank you. Same thing, this was one of those tax amendments that was brought up in the six or seven we talked about on May 17th. Background, this has been an issue that's come up. I'll show a couple pictures in a moment, just that, just to give you an idea, for a home, when you have a daylight basement, a lot of times in the past, people have sort of like a winged foundation wall that will extend out to allow for the daylight basement. And that foundation wall, as it's built with the building permit, is part of the home permit. It's not considered a retaining wall by building code, and so it's just part of the home. And so there is no height requirement for it. Recently, we've had residents, when they're building their homes, not want that appearance of a 10-foot foundation wall extending out on their daylight basement. And so we've seen a couple, a couple of them start doing rock retaining walls. The issue with that is, once it's a rock retaining wall, it's technically not attached to the home as a foundation wall, therefore it requires a separate permit, and we recognize it as a retaining wall, and you have a 6-foot max. And we've had contractors and residents be very confused as to, if we did it aesthetically this way, it would be okay, but we want it to look a little better, and now we have this height max, and it makes it not possible. And so the proposed amendment is just to basically fix that discrepancy. So that 6-foot max would remain for all other retaining walls. The proposed exception would be for daylight basements and window wells. And that proposed maximum height, after discussing that with our building official, he suggested 11 feet typically for people's basements. They have a 10-foot basement, and the 11-foot is just to give them a little bit of wiggle room. This is an example of one that's in Highland. Sorry, the lighting's a little bad, but this one came out to be about 10 feet and 4 inches, I believe. And so you can see, they have the stairs going down, and then they have those rock retaining walls that are obviously higher than the 6 feet. In order for them to meet code, we did, honestly, I don't know if they did it, but when I went out there, I told them that they had to adhere it to meet our retaining wall requirements to do a 6-foot, come out 2 and 1/2 or whatever, or 4 feet for the, for the rest of the retaining, for their 4-foot retaining wall on that side to meet our code. There's the other view from the other side. This is one that I just looked up on Google, just to give you a better image of what that would look like. This is also, this is a window well example. I had honestly never seen one of these before, doing rock retaining, but it looks nice. doing rock retaining, but it looks nice, but this one still exceeded that six feet, and so it was just an idea after the fact to, if this comes in the future, to add that exception. Reason being, these are retaining walls that are only facing the property owner, you can't view them from the street, you can't view them from adjacent properties. We sent out the public hearing notices for it, and like the others, didn't receive any resident correspondence. Planning Commission held their public hearing, and they recommended approval with the vote of five-one. The commissioners expressed safety concerns for that, like potentially an eleven-foot drop, and we, during the meeting, were confused as to what actual international building code required, because we understood that there were some guard rail requirements, but we didn't know when, and so they recommended approval with the condition that we as staff look into IBC, see what the requirements are, and present that to council for the council's consideration. So that's what this is. IBC requires that a forty-two-inch guard rail, guard rail is required along any open side walking surfaces that are higher than thirty inches from whatever the grade is below. And specifically, walking surfaces isn't just any surface, it's sidewalks, or stairways, or our building official said he's required them on driveways that have a drop on the edge when there's a door going into the side garage, because he considers that a walkway or somewhere that the property owner would be walking consistently, and so if you have a retaining wall like that, and like the one we just looked at, and there's just some landscaping on top, that guard rail would not be required. If there was a pathway along it, then yes, but that's just what IBC requires. Here are those motions to either approve or deny, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
In this motion, it doesn't talk about the guard rail, does it? Is it taken?
No, it doesn't take it under consideration, so if, if y'all were wanting to put a stricter standard, that would be something that you would need to revise the motion to add.
So let me clarify, the guard rail's only needed if there's a walkway right along the top, right?
That is correct.
And it has to be within the thirty inches?
If, if the drop is taller than thirty inches, that guard rail would be required.
Okay, so how close does the walkway need to be the top of the wall? I mean, if your walkway is four feet out, or, but any walkway on the top, is that what you're saying?
That is a really good question, I would assume if it's just on the edge of it, but Andy may have a better response.
Generally, what you look at, and I'm not the city's code official in that, but generally you look at, is there a recovery area if someone were to fall? And if it's not far enough that you're going to fall and you're going to go off the edge, then it's close enough to trigger that, if you will, so somewhere in the, you know, four or five-foot range to where you're beginning to be able to trip, fall, and catch yourself, you know, is where that's going to-
So you're saying at least four foot?
Yeah, probably.
Probably.
Probably four to five feet in that area, because you've got, you know, varying heights, people, et cetera, so.
So what do you mean by a guard rail? Could it be some type of fencing?
Yeah, it is fencing, they have specific regulations, like if you have a wrought iron fence, I don't remember what the exact, what's our, four inches? Okay, no more than a four-inch span between the posts.
Okay.
I just have a question here, I actually do have a rock wall foundation like this that makes our basement be a daylight basement, but it is tiered. What is the footage for that tier? Because I was looking at that one example, and it definitely didn't seem like it was tiered enough to, I mean, I'll be honest, I have kids that climb the rock wall, fall off of it, but, you know, they usually get caught on one of those tiers, so it's not that bad of a fall. I guess I just want to know, what does that tier have to be within?
For our existing code requirements, it's the one-to-one ratio, and so if you're second tier, you need four feet of retaining, you have to be four feet back. If it's six feet, it's six feet back.
Yeah, so show me that one.
Yeah, these ones did not meet code, like, they don't meet our existing code, that's-
Are those in, are those in our city?
These ones are, this one was just one that I pulled from Google, but yeah, this is-
So that one right there, if it doesn't meet code, what are they going to have to do?
They have to tear out everything that's above the six-feet measured from that base, has to be torn out and pushed. I believe they need another, like, four and some change. Feet of retaining, so they had to pull it back.
And will that actually happen?
They told me it would, I, they haven't followed up yet, because we didn't, we didn't issue the permit until it was completed, so I, they haven't reached back out to me, so we'll need to follow up on it.
Would, would they need to have at least a stairwell railing coming down those stairs? I mean, is that part of code too? Like, have these stairs that are pretty steep coming down, even if it's six, six feet, do they need to have some type of walk railing on the side of it, the stairs?
It probably depends on the steepness of it. I'm like, because I'm part of it, you're kind of, like, the boulders kind of follow the height of the stairs, it's not like a direct drop next to it, but-
And a lot of stair fencing requirements are ADA, which don't really apply to private residences, so.
Yeah, I, I was going to say, it's a code official interpretation on that stair rail, but I believe it probably does, but that's not my call.
I guess that's the difference between residential versus commercial, is what, it's their house, they can kind of put the stairs steep, so. Any input from the council? We need to still have a public hearing, but just want to answer any questions or anything before we go to public hearing. Seeing none, we'll now open up the public hearing, the item for a tax amendment to retaining walls. Is there anyone'd like to come address the council on this item? Seeing none, we now close the public hearing and bring it back to council, free the questions or a motion.
I guess I, I would like to make a motion, I just want to make sure that I don't need to include anything in there, to include a stair rail, but that's kind of already included and implied in there.
No, it's, it's not, in this motion, if you wanted to put-
The forty-two inch.
Do I need to put that in there?
Well, that, that's IBC, that's what we already follow. If you wanted a stricter standard than IBC, that's what you would need to include.
Okay, just want to make sure, okay.
Can we, can we summarize, just in a couple of sentences, what, what this is?
Yes, all of the other retaining wall regulations and maximums stay the same, this is just adding an exception for retaining walls for daylight basements and window wells, and putting a maximum of eleven feet for those two specifically.
And does the eleven-foot height require a, some sort of railing, or?
If there is a defined walkway along it, it would require a guard rail.
No walkway, there's just an eleven-foot drop, that could be on cement.
That's what IBC allows, yes.
Okay, so we need to require all kids to wear football helmets, or, I, I mean, that's silly, of course, but it seems like we should extend the railing to a situation such as that. I, that's a big drop, and a lot of times-
That's why we're saying it has to be tiered, though.
It only can be as high as six feet, then tiered back.
Yeah, correct?
I thought it was eleven.
We're making an exception for eleven feet.
Yes.
Exactly, so currently, if they do a rock wall, they would have to do that tiering.
Yeah.
What we found is, there's this odd exception where if they don't put rocks, they just do, you know, the concrete wall, it's considered part of the house foundation and not a retaining wall, so they don't have to tier it. So the question is, do you want to make rock walls, like the foundation walls that they can already do, which is up to an eleven-foot drop, basically? Or do you want to put a guard rail requirement, or do you want to allow those rock walls to stay tiered as they are, so they get a different case than if you just build a cement wall out of your backyard?
I just think anything over six feet, if you're going to make an exception, regardless of it's considered an extension of the home, needs to have some sort of railing, because eleven feet is a big drop, especially for a little kid.
I think that's, that's the main issue, is just that with the foundation wall, it's something that's already allowed, and people can already do without that requirement for a guard rail.
But we can add that stipulation now.
For a home foundation?
I mean, the whole night, we've been talking about safety, this seems like a safety issue.
Just for a home foundation, I don't know.
What, what does everyone else think? Kim?
I mean, when I, when I think of this, I wouldn't want a guard rail up above mine, because that's where I put all my plants and bushes, and so that basically detaches the kids from dropping off a rock wall, so aesthetically, it just wouldn't make sense if it's not close to a rock wa, a walkway, because that's where you kind of put all your trees and your bushes, and that detures you from getting close to the edge, I don't know.
But, Kim, isn't yours tiered? We're talking about-
It's tiered.
An up-and-down wall up to eleven feet, right?
Yeah. What do you think, Scott?
Well, you know, this is an exception for a walkout or daylight basements and window wells. I think if you're going straight up, whether it's a foundation wall that is permitted, or whether it's a rock wall that goes straight up, definitely you need a guard rail if there's a walking path along the top, like we've talked about, but I'm really kind of thinking we should encourage some sort of protection up there, too, and maybe it's bushes and shrubs, I don't know, but that seems like a big straight drop. Now, if it's tiered, it's a different story.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You need to remember, this is the individual's property, I mean, I'm just going, is, they, you know, they're the ones, and I'm not saying we should let them go and have the eleven feet, I agree that the concern, I'm going, well, they're the ones kind of putting it on their own personal property.
Right, but why do we have business, uh, building codes for safety?
Well, no, and this is if there's a walking path, if they, let's just say on the top, they, like Kim was saying, they put landscaping up on top, that's not a walkway, and so they went where that, that, that ten-foot drop would be at.
But, but then the paranoid dad comes out at me that-
I know.
That the, the drop is not seen, because maybe there's a bush that's two feet high, you go running for a pass, and you get a little more than you bargained for, so, I don't know, maybe I'm being overly cautious, but-
Isn't my understanding, though, that we have these walls today, they're just not rock walls, they're cement walls? So we already have these today, the only decision we're making is that, can these be rock walls instead of just cement walls?
Well, it can be whatever we want, I mean, we don't have to limit it to, to that, we can, we can amend it, or however we want, if I understand correctly.
Well, you could, I, I guess, you're saying the IBC code, it says anything over six feet, if it was a walking area, they've got to put some type of railing, so you could say, hey, anything over the six, you could still say that, because, but if they tier it back, if they don't want to put that railing, they could come tier it back two feet-
Yeah, I'm just talking about an eleven-foot sheer drop.
Yeah, I understand, there is a way for them to mitigate the concern if they don't want to put a fence up along that or a railing.
What do you think, Brittany? You're contemplating this.
Yeah, I'm a little bit indifferent to thinking we need to add something else, I feel fine how it is, like, I'm kind of indifferent, sorry.
Well, and I agree with the mayor, in that it's a, it's a homeowner's responsibility and decision, but-
So, this is, going to ask the question for Tim, because he likes to ask this one. If we okay in our code, eleven-foot vertical walls, whether they're permitted now with the cement, or these new rock walls and different things, and don't have anything stipulated for safety, are we liable as a city? Because people can say, oh, well, we met your code, you know, is there any sort of liability?
No, because it's actually not our code, really, it's building code. The rock wall is just a replacement for thick cement wall.
So building code for the state of Utah, or for what?
International building code.
International building code.
That the state of Utah has adopted, and then we adopt that as well. I'll say, if, if this is something you want to look at, I think we'd have to craft like a new ordinance that's just on guard rails regarding these types of foundation walls, because it's, and we could bring that back to the council if you're interested in that.
Are you saying this might need to be continued, because it needs to be part of that item, or you're saying you can pass this, and then still bring back something with?
You could pass this, and then if you were inclined, I mean, you could do whatever you want, you could continue this and have it bring it back, or you could pass this, or not pass this as you decide, and then still have us address whether you want guard rails on foundation slash retaining walls related to daylight basements and window wells.
I'm going to kind of, now shift over to our public safety. Chief Patton, have you seen where we've had accidents where people have fallen, and you're needing to respond over the history of where you've been there in the fire department or things that way, or Chief Williams, maybe you guys could chime in, I mean, what, you know, we're talking about a safety concern, you should have probably seen something like this throughout your, the time you've been serving. Is there not a mic over there, I'm sorry? What about you, Chief Patton? Sorry, you have more to say.
I've seen a couple of them, just falls or different things, I guess with rock walls, or even like, you know, where the stairs come down, where we get our bigger drops. The majority of the injuries I've seen, falls off of walls, like, falls off of walls, are construction accidents, which are, we can't do anything to mitigate that.
Have you had a residential issue where they've had it input, like with this, and they've had the wall where the kids have fallen and hurt themselves, or things of that nature?
I mean-
You're going to see everything.
Kids fall. The world's a dangerous place, but nothing that's been like an arduous, you know, somebody built a ten or eleven-foot cliff in their backyard, but off of foundation walls and off of, you know, I mean, you can put a railing on it, and kids will crawl over the railing and be walking on the other side of the railing, I mean, they're, they're going to figure out how to fall.
That's, that's the best quote I've heard.
It's so true.
We give them now something to hang on with, if they like it.
They really will, actually, the railing would probably make my kids move towards it, so they could swing off of it and hold on to it.
Counsel, what would you like to do with this?
I'll make a motion. I move that the city council accept the findings and approve the proposed amendment to section three dash six, one, two, fences, retaining walls, theme and screen walls relating to the daylight basements and window wells.
I'll second.
Yeah, a motion by Sarah, second by Brittany. Any other discussion before we go to vote? If none, let's go to vote. That passes four to one. We'll now move on to another public hearing item, number six, public hearing in ordinance, the tax amendment on setbacks and encroachment.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. On that May seventeenth meeting, when this was briefly discussed, it was more presented as a, looking to see if any of the council supported us moving forward with looking into doing something like this, and the council briefly discussed some hypothetical situations of when they've seen or when they've heard residents asking about it, and indicated that they were comfortable with staff moving forward and having this presented. Background, this is coming up because of the confusion among home builders, residents, and staff regarding where setbacks are measured. The existing setback definition is the shortest distance between the property line and outside surface of the foundation wall or mainframe of the building exclusive of fireplace, or fire chases. Developers and residents have argued that, like, cantilevers and stairwells should not be considered a wall or mainframe, the issue with that, often, we've had things come up where a home builder will present a cantilever that's just six inches above the ground, and so it looks like it's just into the setback, although the foundation wall doesn't come into the setback, and so there have been disagreements on that side. The proposed amendment is to essentially make the definition of setback a lot stricter, but allow a certain amount of, or certain amount and certain type of encroachment, minor encroachment into the setback, and so we're proposing the definition of setback be the shortest distance between the property line and outside surface of support posts, cantilevers, bay, bow, or box windows, or any hard wall line of the structure. The Planning Commission recommend, in addition to that, I'll mention in just a moment, and then we're also proposing a clarification that no setback encroachments are permitted to project into easements of any kind below and above ground, and so you have the typical ten-foot public utility easements, we've had residents that will build their basements and want to go underground, and say, as long as it's not above ground, the setback shouldn't matter, but then you have existing public utility easements right there, which becomes an issue. And the proposed amendment continued, this is specifying those setback encroachments, what we're proposing to allow, and so this is reflecting the ordinance in R one forty, R one thirty, and R one twenty, so it's allowing in the front setback- the front setback, a five-foot encroachment for thirty percent of the length of the dwelling, except for stairways. And so it's not letting those, um, stairs go into that encroachment. Um, side allowing for five feet for thirty percent of the length of the dwelling, side corner, five feet for thirty percent of the length of the dwelling, same. And then rear, five feet for fifty percent of the length of the dwelling. Um, most of this is just as it's stated in the staff report from American Fort Code. Uh, we sent out the appropriate public hearing notices for this item and received no resident correspondence. Planning Commission held their public hearing on June twenty-eighth, and they recommended approval with the stipulation that the definition be updated to be measured from property line, back of asphalt, back of curb, or back of sidewalk, whichever is closest to the structure. The, the purpose of that, um, was just, we have those older properties in Highland where the actual property line goes into city right of way, or will be right in the middle of the asphalt. Um, and so this will protect those setbacks by calling out whichever one is closest. After, this is something we'd like the council to discuss and consider. After the planning commission meeting, staff was made aware that there is, um, an existing stairwell that the proposed amendment does not address. Um, and so, uh, a resident would essentially need to tear it out if it didn't meet code. Um, and to address the situation, if the council wanted to move forward and allow this existing stairwell, um, this in quotes would be, um, what the council would add, just that stairwells, rather than the five feet, it would be stairwell specifically, may project up to seven feet into that side yard setback, but in no event shall any part of the stairwell be less than five feet from the property line or located with an easement. If you visualize typically, you have that fifteen-foot side setback and you have a ten-foot public utility easement. And so, I mean, if you're allowing a five-foot setback encroachment, typically that's seven. If there's a ten-foot PUE, they won't be allowed to be in it. Um, but it is adding exceptions for, uh, specific subdivisions that either have smaller PUEs, or which we see in a lot of open space subdivisions, or the really old subdivisions that didn't have the ten-foot public utility easements on the side property lines. Um, so that would fix a residence issue and could fix residence issues in the future, um, but it's just something for the council to consider. Um, the motion to approve, it includes that add or do not add the stairwell exception for your consideration when, um, you decide to make a motion, and then there's the motion to deny if you decide to deny the amendment as a whole.
Can I just make sure, when you're talking stairwells, are you only talking descending stairwells, or they can be also ascending, I mean, they're going up? It doesn't matter what the stairwell is?
The, this would be both, but you're welcome to specify if you think, if you feel it necessary.
So Kelly, would you just, for the public that's here, just review what our standard setbacks are. You mentioned the fifteen-foot side one, but we have a thirty-foot front and a thirty-foot back, or, I'm just to clarify that.
Uh-huh, yeah. For R one forty, um, and R one thirty, you have the thirty-foot front setback and then thirty-foot rear. And so you'd be allowing that five-foot encroachment, um, bringing it to twenty-five and twenty-five again for that only specified percentage of the length of the building. Um, and then, that's the thing, in a lot of the open space subdivisions where you have the smaller lots, there are smaller setbacks. Um, we have some, um, ten and fifteen, twenty-five feet, uh, side yard combos, um, where it's just ten feet on one side, fifteen on the other. There are some open space subdivisions where it's twelve and a half, twelve and a half on each side. They're, honestly, they're pretty specific to what's on the plat. Um, but majority of everything that's in code for new development are those fifteen-foot side setbacks and thirty-foot front and rear.
So you indicated that there was one, uh, seven-foot stairwell. I dare say there are hundreds that are already existing in the city, because if people have either walkout basement or apartment in their basement, you need some way to access that and some sort of type of stairwell. I mean, one of my partners tried to put in a stairwell and, and things, but he was too close to his property line, but they were trying to put in a basement apartment, and their options were to tear out their front driveway or garage, or, you know, another structure in the back. So I, I kind of leaned towards allowing a stairwell, uh, because, um, I think a lot of people can't access their basement apartments without one.
Well, let me ask you Scott, would you, I mean, my concern is, I, I think when it descends, people can't see them from the road, you know, they-
Right. Well, this is a descending, I'm talking about.
If they're ascending, they kind of, it becomes part of, looks like part of the structure. I'm just, I, I just think as we're looking, that was kind of where I'd-
I would lean towards a descending.
I would say if we're looking, I would recommend, hey, be considered, uh, I don't, I don't have as big a concern about the descending as much as having a structure on the outside that's ascending up, so. Any other input for the council? Not, we're, is there anything before we go to public hearing? At this time, we will now open the public hearing. Anyone that'd like to come up and address this item concerning setbacks of stairwells in the encroachment area. Seeing none, we'll now close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Is there any other questions? If not, ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move the city council accept the findings and approve the proposed amendment to the setback requirements in the R one forty, R one thirty, and the R one twenty zones, with the stipulation recommended by the planning commission as shown in exhibit A. And I would add the stairwell exception, the seven-foot exception.
Want anything about descending or something, or just exception added?
Uh, Rob was shaking his head over there. I'm not sure how you would do that, cause all stairs ascend or descend.
I was just, I was-
You're thinking about going up to another story, I think, yeah.
Yes, that was kind of my concern. I think if we just put in something along the lines of the stairwell exception for stairs that descend only, I think that would limit basically you have a grade, a landing at the top, and then you just only go down. Basically, anything that goes up, we wouldn't allow. There would be some structures, usually some kind of retaining wall or, you know, handrail that you grab at stop, start to go down, but that would be the only part above grade.
Okay. So Stephanie, put that in the minutes as part of my motion.
Okay, so that is-
I think it's just for descending stairwells.
So Scott, yours is descending stairwell where they can have a landing with the going in, is that right?
Right.
That's part of your motion. Okay, I have a motion by Scott. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have Brittany, there's a second. Any other discussion? If not, we can vote. That passes five to zero. We'll now move on to item number seven, which is an action item. This pressized irrigation service agreement with Beth Wilson. Andy, I believe you have that presentation.
Yes, Mayor and Council, um, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, and the family, uh, Wilson family asked that it be pulled off, if you'll recall. But, uh, looking at this, uh, ditch that we're talking about specifically, uh, this is what's known as the Harmon Ditch. And the council will recall, um, a couple of years ago, um, the council did an agreement with the Peck family, which is a, a little bit farther south on sixty-eight hundred west. And, uh, over the time, uh, last few years, the council has, uh, given staff instruction and especially informed of that Peck agreement to, uh, try and work through, uh, what it would take to eliminate the Harmon Ditch. Uh, this ditch, uh, comes clear off the Murdoch Canal, um, goes all the way along the city trail, uh, in the Wimbledon area. And, uh, currently, the only user left on this ditch is, uh, Beth Wilson, um, who lives in, in the home that's, uh, just north of the church that's, is at the corner of ninety-six hundred north and sixty-eight hundred west, um, just for a reference. Uh, so it's a very long ditch. Uh, there's one user. Um, we've been able to get, uh, with the family and work through the details to the point where they're comfortable. Um, you were all emailed a few last changes, um, from City Legal today, which, uh, you know, didn't really change the intent of the agreement. The intent of the agreement is that, uh, they will take their shares through the pressurized irrigation system. The city, uh, for its part, in, uh, allowing that or providing that conveyance will receive forty-five percent of their water. Um, and, uh, you may say, well, are they gonna lose their, some of their water? Um, and that's certainly a concern of the, of the family, but, uh, I believe, uh, as does, uh, the member of the family that I've been negotiating with, uh, that's kind of lead family representative, that what they actually yield at the property will actually be more than they've gotten in the past because of all the losses that happen in an open ditch. Um, but the agreement does, uh, provide, if, if it does, if it is found that they, uh, that they, uh, do need a little bit more water, they can go buy another share or two and, and, and make it up. But, uh, we, we think that this is a, a, a good move for all involved, uh, and certainly for, uh, if we're looking at the greater use of the water resources, um, and step back, uh, and just look at that, a much better use, uh, because all of that water that, uh, had been lost in the ditch, um, will now be captured and used where it's intended to be used.
So Andy, um, we have kind of a similar agreement, but with the Peck and Williams, but they've allowed us to use a lot of their water shares. That's been a benefit to the city, right?
Yeah, yeah. Last year, if you recall, um, and that, they, they kind of led the way, right, uh, with how it worked out for the city. Um, this agreement's a little more specific in regard to the actual percentage than the Pecks were, but Pecks, uh, give the city somewhere on the order of about a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty acre feet, um, to put in the, in the water system. And last year, they used about sixty-five acre feet. So the city was to the good, if you will, by, uh, you know, somewhere in the order of fifty acre feet. I know those numbers aren't adding up, but, you know, it's dependent on the year, et cetera. And so the city, while we received a slightly lesser portion, we got approximately half of their water for letting it be delivered, uh, through the, through the, through the ditch system. They got the water, uh, you know, in a way that was, uh, more convenient for them to use. And, uh, you know, we got the benefit of the additional water, and, and so everybody won.
Have, have there been problems with them using the water?
No, not today. Uh, not, not a lot of, not a lot of problems. The big thing is, uh, that with these, this agreement as well, um, these, these users, the Pecks, the Pecks are on a whole different level, right? This is a very small field.
Yes.
But we want these, uh, types of properties to water during the day, uh, because that way it's offsetting, you know, when the residents, uh, are at peak. And so that's part of how we've managed, uh, you know, the, so that we're not, uh, making it so that the residents somehow experience a loss because of what we've done there.
Well, I appreciate all your work on this, because I've been in favor of eliminating this ditch for a long time. And I've actually been told by some residents living on the ditch, they haven't seen water run down there for over a year. So I don't know if that's true or not, but maybe wishful thinking. But I appreciate your help on this.
Yeah, and, uh, I, we also want to, uh, point out that this is being made possible because of, uh, some participation by Millhaven and, uh, by Lehigh Irrigation.
Lehigh Irrigation.
So, well, it's, well, it doesn't cost the city, the, the city's cost is just simply the cost of the meters. We also paid to, uh, insert a, a pressurized irrigation connection to the property, but we actually did that at kind of a timely point where we were doing some work associated with sixty-eight hundred west. And so it didn't cost us a whole lot to, uh, add the service for this. And then what we're suggesting in the proposed motion is that the, uh, cost of the meter, which is, you know, around fifteen hundred dollars, would be paid out of any land sales that we, uh, get from Wimbledon, uh, any of the pending land sales, because, uh, that subdivision will definitely receive a direct benefit to no longer having the, the ditch.
So, um, what's the timeline? If we approve this, the Wilson family's happy with it, how long would it take to eliminate that ditch?
Well, uh-
Is Millhaven going to do that? Who's going to do it? The city?
Oh, the, what, what happens from there, if we, just to answer your question, maybe in a broader sense, what's, what's the road forward? Right? Road forward from here, um, is, uh, the family needs to receive the payment, but, you know, in order to install the, the sprinkler system. And-
Right.
So assuming that happens fairly quickly, they sign the agreement, the sprinkler system would be installed, you know, as quick as it could be. And, uh, then those that live along the, uh, ditch, uh, we would be one of them, cause we are the property owners through which, you know, it runs as far as the Wimbledon subdivision, the open space. The property owners would apply to Lehigh Irrigation to abandon that section of the ditch, and then at, at that property owner's leisure, they could fill it or whatever, you know, from there. Uh, Lehigh Irrigation, to me, indicated that if this agreement went forward, everybody signed it, they would, uh, send kind of a proactive, uh, letter, uh, to the people on the ditch and say, hey, just, you know, I don't know exactly what it'll say, but, you know, just for your-
During it?
For your, for your information, it's now eligible. If you want to abandon it, turn us in this application. Something to that effect.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh, not that I can hold that, them to that by any means, but they, you know, conversationally, they said, sure, we'll put the word out, you know, kind of part of-
Okay, well, that's good.
Part of what we were talking about. But Lehigh's not gonna go fill it. Nobody's gonna fill it for them, if you will. Um, it would just be made available, all right, if it runs through your yard and you've got it abandoned, go to town, landscape it, do what you're gonna do.
So I'd like to make a motion. So I move that the city, Highland City Council approve the agreement with Beth Larson-Wilson, and fund the cost of the two-inch meter from proceeds from the sale of property from the Wimbledon subdivision, and add the, I guess there were some small stipulations today.
Yeah, if that's okay, if it's just, uh, if, if you're acknowledging that you're in agreement with the-
Yes.
Changes were provided by City Legal and distributed to the council today.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Scott, second by Kim. Any other discussion? If not, we're ready for a motion. I don't have a motion for a vote, I'm sorry. That passes five to zero. Andy, I want to tell you thank you. I know that you spend a lot of time there with the Wilson family. This has been, I think, you know, Scott, how many years has this been coming down the path to try to get done?
Years.
I, I mean, so this is one that it, you know, it, it's taken a lot of work with the family. I appreciate the council being willing. You know, I did mention some things that Millhaven had one of their representatives earlier tonight. I just said, hey, are you anticipating they'll even fill in some of the ditch? They said, by some of their property, if, if they can, they'll fill it in if it's abandoned. They believe some of their, their owners, if they go put a fence, they will probably want to fill it in, so it's not a, maybe their fences are planted. So hopefully we can get some of that ditch filled in, but at least we got the water out of it.
Okay.
So.
I'll bring a shovel for it.
I'm sure there'll be a couple others. Okay, we'll now move on to item number eight. It's an action item. It's revising the encroachment policy and maintenance agreement. And Rob, we have you down for that one.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Um, this is the encroachment policy that the committee from the council and others have been working on for some time. Uh, we brought it to the council. I mean, this has been going on for a long time. We have a long history. We have a short summary, um, committee was established in December. April nineteenth, we first took this policy to this council, and you gave us some feedback on the policy and the proposed maintenance or then encroachment agreement and how you like to see that. Uh, the committee then met after that, and we reviewed some things, made some additional changes. We focused on trying to make it more of the positive language rather than the punitive language. That was a, a major concern of the council. Um, so with that, we, now that kind of budget has done, we brought it back for the council to, uh, review and see if you have any additional comments or thoughts, or if not, um, whether you'd like to move forward with this as it's been presented. Um, so there's kind of three parts to this. Uh, one is the actual policy itself. It goes through, you know, what is an, an encroachment, uh, what is a maintenance agreement. Uh, with maintenance agreements, it says, the old agreements, we had a template form we used to use, uh, those will be honored until they expire, and then they'll need to come in and reapply for a new one, cause we've kind of changed the template to reflect some of the changes in the policy. Um, and I'll touch on those in a little bit. Um, and then it also outlines our kind of compliance procedures. First, we encourage people to voluntarily review their property, go on the parcel map, see where their property is and fix things. And then, uh, there's a process for the removal of improvements. Uh, generally, the standard would be to remove back to natural or the previous, kind of the original state of the property. Uh, there is a, an option in the policy for the council if, you know, say someone has beautified it and they put in rocks and, you know, it's not quite the way it was before, to say, well, we like it as it is now, but you can remove certain encroachments, you can leave certain things on there because they do enhance the property. And that is for the removal. Um, the maintenance agreement follows that. There's now a proposed application fee to just cover a little bit of the cost for staff to review and then bring it to council. Uh, the current proposal is twenty-five dollars, uh, for that. Um, agreements are supposed to be submitted with an improvement plan where the, uh, resident, uh, shows what they- uh, shows what they plan to do with the property. Uh, there are a number of restrictions that are, this is the major change to the maintenance agreement. Where before sort of curbing or, uh, plantings were allowed, the permit goes through a long list of things that are not allowed. And probably the biggest change is a maximum of twenty-five hundred square feet of irrigated area. It doesn't mean the maintenance agreement is limited to that, you could have a five or six thousand square foot maintenance or maintained area. It's just sprinklers can only extend for twenty-five hundred feet of that to try to reduce the cost or the impact on the city's PI system. Also provisions regarding, the council may set additional fees, you know, for water usage and the like. Uh, we have all of that, uh, liability language that council member Ball will be interested in regarding the city maintaining its rights and, uh, in, into the property. The agreement can, basically, once it's entered into, it'll last for five years, then they come back in, staff can reapprove it if it's basically the same agreement and they've complied. If there's any issue with it, they want to change things, it comes back to council. So, once the council approves it, it basically continues until something changes. Um, and then we have the same process for fixing things. If they don't comply, we can revoke the agreement and they'll have to fix the property as per the policy. So that's, in a nutshell, the encroachment agreement. It doesn't touch on any particular property per se, it's just, here's the outline of how we're going to start moving forward with this.
Now, I just, now, as I look at, if the city deems that they need the property, that, that we have a maintenance agreement, we could then enter and, and cancel that, but we need to show there's a cause why we're doing that, correct?
Right. There's a, we give them notice of saying, we need to use this. Um, it also has a provision in there where if they restrict access either to the public or to city representatives, that can result in immediate termination of the maintenance agreement. It still has to remain open for either city or residents to use that property. It's, it's designed to be a maintenance agreement. If the resident wants to beautify an area, it's a generous gift to the city, we want to appreciate that, we want to make sure those open spaces remain open.
What happens if the property sells? Does that maintenance agreement pass on to the new owner?
Uh, yes, it does.
So do we need to do anything in recording against the title to notify the new owner? And twenty-five dollars probably would not handle that recording fee.
No, that, that's just our application fee. Um, we could increase the fee or say, you have to cover our costs for recording it. We do have it as it, them notarizing it, so it's able to be recorded. And that was the intent, so we would give notice to next property owner. You have an agreement with the city for this first portion of your property back there because it's not actually your property, which hopefully will address some of those concerns that we've heard.
Rob, how are they notified that that is the case? Is that a requirement upon closing? Ask her, when is that?
Typically, most people when they go buy property, they have a title search done and title work and it shows, you know, a list of fifteen different things that are on your title and one of them will be maintenance agreement with Highland City and...
So there's no way they can claim ignorance?
And even under the law, even if you don't get a title search, the courts say, if it's on your title, you're deemed to, you should spend the time to know what's recorded against your title. We, we've done the work of saying, we've given you notice, we can't be present at your, you know, your closing, but we did our best.
Well, like, the twenty-five, I think it's forty dollars at this time, it can change with the county. I don't know if we want, you know, because that would be a recording fee to be able to put this, you know, but I think it also protects the resident that there's a maintenance agreement saying, hey, here's an agreement in place that, you know, that is, is on the property, so...
So let me ask some questions because, uh, you know, we've discussed encroachment issues for years and, and first of all, I'd like to really thank the staff and council women, um, Bills and Peterson, the subcommittee, for all the work they've done on this. I think, and Rob too. I, I really appreciate that because, um, it's much improved from the original rendition that I saw and, and you've put some things that I suggested. Um, I, I guess my big question is, and I asked this when I was talking to Brittany, um, it seems like most of the encroachment problems in the city are, involve the open space neighborhoods. Am I correct, Kelly? Is there, there's not much encroachment outside the open space neighborhoods? Correct? Okay, my, my question is, um, I'm supportive of this, but how are we going to administer it? Um, I would hope, and this is a suggestion I make, is that we kind of, we've got eighteen open space neighborhoods where there's varying amounts of encroachment. I would recommend that we kind of work on one, uh, neighborhood at a time because I think you're going to have to look at the county plant maps and all the property lines and things before you issue letters. Because if we just sent it out to the whole city, I think, I worry about there being a firestorm for the city staff. Um, and, and so I, I think it would be nice to be, uh, council because I ran up along Catty Lane today and I know without a doubt that some of those people with rock retaining walls, which are prohibited now in maintenance agreements, actually probably are in the city, um, easement there. So I don't know for sure until I see the property lines and everything. So I think we just need to kind of look at each neighborhood and kind of focus on one at a time rather than try to do the whole city at one time. Does that make sense to anybody else?
All right, I, I, I would agree because I think, I'll be real, I think we need also, if we go slow, we see if there were some issues we weren't aware of.
Right.
You know, I mean, you know, I don't, like you said, also send a notice. If we go to one subdivision, okay, does it apply, okay? Because this is a new policy. Then we can go to the second as long as we don't see issues.
Right. So, uh, what do you think, Kelly? I mean, you don't want to do the whole city at one time.
I'm like, that would make my workload a lot lighter, that's for sure.
If we did this.
If we did it subdivision by subdivision.
And you could do it over a period of time. This is our policy and, you know, we may want to look at some of the conservation areas immediately up in Beacon Hills.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, if the council could give some direction as to which ones they would like to prioritize or what, just the order that we would go in, that would be greatly appreciated.
And I think some of the ones that have been egregious have been kind of into the conservation areas. Is that not true? Because the maintenance agreements along the trails actually beautify the trails, in my opinion, or at least the ones I've seen. I, I'm not sure what the other council, uh, people think, but, um, I think the encroachment in the conservation areas has been the big heated discussion. Am I wrong? And would I... So, uh, that's a kind of rhetorical question, but, um, I'm usually wrong, but anyhow. But, um, the other question I had is, why the five-year renewal? It seems to me like that is a lot of burden on the city's staff. If things are working fine, they paid their fee, because what I hear from the open space residents are the following. Why would I spend money out of my pocket? And sometimes it's not hundreds of dollars, it's thousands, to beautify some city land that I already pay the open space fee to maintain? And then in five years, you might make me rip it all out. So why would I even make the investment? So it's, the maintenance agreements in the past have been longer. Is, I'd just like to understand the reason why five instead of longer.
We talked about that with the committee, kind of went back and forth on different numbers. Um, in some ways, five is, it's one thing, kind of a round number, but it, it's long enough that you'd hope that, you know, a resident would have some amount of time to enjoy it, but turnover would still, we try to catch as many people as possible with turnover, letting them know, like, oh, this is coming up, we can review your property. It's, it could go back, I think the original was ten?
The original was ten, yeah.
Yeah, the previous version was ten years. Um, it was kind of just a discussion, that was the number that was reached. It's not, it's, it's how many times do you want the resident to be reminded that it's not their property? And that's kind of the question. Having it be a shorter period does have that kind of disincentivizing factor. As mentioned of, oh, if it expires in five years, it's really worth it to me to put it in there. For the city side, there's the advantage of saying, well, every five years, you get to come back in and we can, you know, we'll do our quick checkup. Oh, you look like you're doing fine. Stamp, here's another five years for you. So that, that's kind of the, the two balancing issues.
I think that help, by having it be staff, we also remove a little of the politicalness that might happen at five years. We were, we might not all be here in five years and so it's a little easier that, it's now a staff decision versus a political decision.
Well, and I think if we stagger it a little bit as we go through the different neighborhoods, that we can kind of, it might work out better. I'm just afraid that every five years, you've got this overwhelming...
It might be.
And, and the, the question I have, then, the big burning question in my mind, is do we, as a council and staff, think there are benefits with having maintenance agreements? Are we trying to promote or dissuade them? Because there's still a fair amount of bureaucracy in this agreement that would kind of dissuade me if I was in that situation. The five-year, and then I have to pay it a fee and they could, and there's this implication that the city could come by and say, we're going to tuck it out. And so, you know, I don't know, I have a little trouble with that. And I think for me, this would be easier to really support a hundred percent, and I'm going to support it, but, um, if we eliminated the root of all evil, which is the open space fee, which sets up a false expectation that this property is going to be maintained better than it is and it causes frustration and anger. So, I don't know, that's why I keep pushing to eliminate that, because I think it's the driving force behind some of the encroachment. Now, that's probably my opinion only. So, anyway, I've said what I want to say.
I think these are all really valid points. I like the fact that you brought up that this should be staggered, just for staff's sake and, and for our sake as well. Um, and you're right, it is tied to that open space fee and I hope to see that on the agenda within the next few months so that we can tackle that issue and take care of that as well, so it can coincide with this. I don't know, Brittany, what do you think?
Oh, um, well, I mean, I guess to your question of why five years, we felt like we needed to have a time limit on it because, just like you said, it disincentivizes some of the encroachment. There's some encroachment that we want to disincentivize, not all of it, right? There's a lot of encroachment that I think looks really nice along our trails. I love Catty Lane. There's a lot of it that we like, but I think the reminder that this is public land and that there won't be an argument that says, but I forgot, but you've ignored it for twenty years, it's always been that way because there will be that constant five-year reminder. So that was kind of the reason, um, behind that.
So how are we going to keep records on this? Because apparently we haven't been able to keep good records. I understand we don't know how many maintenance agreements are out there.
We do, we have them filed as part of the city recorder's file system and, um, but it was just a matter of, it took us a while to get them all organized because we hadn't looked at them for ten years. Um, but I, that's something that I do want to sit down and sit down with Stephanie and Nathan and see if we can figure out a really organized way to go about this. Um, because like you said, this is something that if we are wanting the residents to renew every, every five years, we need to be very organized with it. So it's definitely something that staff's going to be looking further into.
So could the staff come up with maybe a list of priorities, which neighborhoods they want to attack first? I mean, it'd be nice as a council to know that because we will hear from the residents on this, I promise.
Or we could give them a list of neighborhoods that we would like them to attack first. Not attack, we're not attacking any. That was like a horrible...
Don't you like to approach first, let them be aware about encroachment?
Yeah, okay.
So is it, is it y'all giving us...
Yeah, we're going to give you guys a list.
It's we all.
Oh, okay.
We all will.
And I think, I think council member Smith is absolutely right that it, we're going to have to look neighborhood by neighborhood. We found that, we tried to make a blanket policy and we can make, I think, set some parameters, but he's absolutely right that it just, it doesn't work.
We'll see how it applies. That's why it's better to go a little slow, I think.
All right.
Let me ask you, is there any concern about if we, would you like it recorded against the title? I think that was one of the questions I had was, do we feel it's important to have it so when they get a title search, if they're looking at the property, they're aware there's a maintenance agreement? Is that a, is that a priority that you'd like to have?
Well, haven't we had instances where people have bought a property thinking it was their property, but it actually was part of a maintenance agreement or something?
Kelly?
So I think it needs to be kind of on the title, so the title search people can discover that.
I agree.
Yeah.
It needs to be on the... So how much would that cost?
Uh, and I think you could just say whatever the recording fee at the time, because that could change. Right now, I believe it's forty dollars, but, and may, and that's only needs to be done the first time. Now, if they renew another five years, Rob, would it have to be renewed or can it just say there's a maintenance agreement? I guess it shows the agreement that can be renewed.
I mean, the agreement by its own terms expires at five years.
Does that have to be renewed?
I would say it would have to be rerecorded every five years.
So it's really not a twenty-five dollar fee, it's a sixty-five dollar fee?
If we want, yeah.
If you want to exit it.
Okay.
We wrote it into the contract, either the resident records and pays or they reimburse the city for the costs. So however you want to go about it, if you want to have just, they pay twenty-five plus whatever the current recording fee is, um, and then we just ma- make sure we handle recording. Might be easier.
They are getting the benefit of property, they don't know. I mean, there's, now, I understand along the trail, I, I, I'm just trying to help give a warning that if they sell the property, that it's on the property.
Well, I think it's important that the buyer understands that, you know?
Are we, any other further discussion? We ready for a motion?
So I just had one other, and I, and I, I promise I don't want to upset the mayor here, but in, in the terminology here, it's very true, we talk about the city using taxpayer funds to acquire open space. And it's very true that we bonded to buy parks. We know that the Mountain Ridge Park, a lot of that was supposed to be donated through the developer, but he went bankrupt, the city bought that. So that's true. My understanding with the original eighteen open space neighborhoods is there's a requirement for the developer to donate that property and only to get the density, but I'm not sure that we have documentation that the city actually purchased the property. Am I mistaken?
That they purchased it at the dollar or something.
Yeah, I don't think we made, so I'm just thinking maybe if we took out or made an explanation, because it was either acquired or received, because some of the people in the open space neighborhoods, they see that acquire and they say, well, that isn't true. Do you know what I mean? I, I don't think the city actually acquired that property, they received it as part of the development code and things, but they didn't actually spend taxpayer money to buy it.
I think when they record the plat, they dedicated the property to the city.
Right.
So there would not be like a dollar sell or a ten dollar sell.
So it's pretty explicit in the explanation here that the city acquired some of that. So I know they're talking about parks and other things, a lot of that's true, but I just think maybe we ought to put another phrase in there, like, or received it at the time of development or something. So it's up in the explanation, I can't remember which line, but it said, talks about the city acquiring it with taxpayer monies a couple times. And that may be more in the explanation material, but I think the explanation material will kind of stick with the ordinance, won't it?
Do you find it?
So it's background and purpose, in order to attain and preserve these benefits, the city has acquired a large amount of property throughout the city. I, I just think of the word acquired as purchasing and where, I don't know, I just think it's a clarification. Does that make sense?
If you like, we can change that word. I actually use the word acquired because in my mind, it doesn't mean purchase. Acquire then, because you can acquire through donation, dedication, deed.
Yeah, well, maybe just put a little phrase in there just to explain a little more. When I read acquire, I think they bought it because there's a lot of talk about taxpayer money being used. Yeah, I just, just a little deal, but I think if people read through that, I don't, you know, I'm just trying to keep people from being upset.
Any other discussion? If not, ready for a motion?
I want Brittany or Sarah to make the motion since they've worked so hard on this.
Yeah, I'll make the, I'll make the motion, I'm just trying to pull up the right one.
Do you have that motion?[1714.21] There it is.
There we go.
I move that the City Council approve the resolution adopting the Highland City encroachment policy, the maintenance agreement template, and the $25 application fee. Do I need to add in the recording, along with the recording fee?
I have a motion by Sarah.
I'll second.
And a second by Brittany.
I was just thinking about how happy Kelly's going to be after this.
Okay, are we ready for vote, or is there further discussion? Seeing none, let's move to vote. That passes 5 to 0. I'd like to congratulate the council, this has been a long time coming. Thank you for, once again, the hard work for those council members. We had several members of our planning commission that was also on that committee to try to help formulate this. Now, what we say the work begins.
The fun just began.
Kelly had that question of, when do you want us to bring an item back to the council to describe which subdivisions you want us to start with?
August the 2nd.
Perfect.
So, but we're going to determine which ones, right?
Yes, so that will be under determination. We're saying these, here's kind of your priority list. I mean, I don't know, there's a reason to wait, it's two weeks, is that enough time?
Yeah, certainly we can do a priority list and kind of be timer of that.
We'll just have an agenda item for the council to set the priority list for staff.
I don't think it'll be that hard.
No, I don't either.
So why wouldn't you make a list of like, the encroachment neighborhoods? Because some neighborhoods don't have any.
Yeah, we can include the encroachment maps.
And then we can vote or something, would that be okay?
Mm-hmm.
I think we know that the three, four subdivisions have big encroachment areas.
Yeah, we do, but it would be nice to...
And can I just make a request? That if we could get those maps as early as possible? Just because if there's, there's some places that I may want to walk that I haven't walked yet, where I'm trying to walk every one of those neighborhoods so that I can get the feel of it and talk to the neighbors.
And that's a good, good, good suggestion for all of us. If we're going to be enforcing certain things or giving suggestions, I think that's a reasonable.
On major ones, we might want to have a field trip.
And I, and I, you know, to be honest, that might not be a bad idea also, do a couple of field trips.
Yeah, because, and we're going to have to answer, and we need to understand it.
I agree, I think that's a good suggestion. Okay, we are now moving on to item number nine. This item is adoption of the designation of disposable properties. Kelly, we have you on that one.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This is something that y'all reviewed several times as well, along with, well, on June 15th, when all of the open space requests were being reviewed as part of the policy that was adopted by the council. And there were 54 property requests that were approved and 13 that were deferred. On November 9th, those deferred properties were brought back to the council for consideration. All except for the properties within the Twin Bridges subdivision were either approved or denied. And so after that point, all we had left were those Twin Bridges properties. During that meeting, the council discussed options of possibly selling up to 10 feet from the scrub oak. There was also discussion about possibly using the revenue to upgrade the, the revenue from those property sales to upgrade the PI system, because it was recognized, the undue burden it had on the existing PI system and that it was not designed to irrigate this property. December 7th, it was brought back to the council again, showing different exhibits of either 10 feet from scrub oak or 15 feet from property line, just a bunch of different options. And the council, after discussing, decided to continue the item to a later date. And Brittany Bills and Sarah Peterson were then put on the task of coming up with this encroachment policy that the council just passed just now. Going, just a quick summary again of that orphan property parcel, or, oh my goodness, orphan property disposal policy that was approved back in 2021. There were certain criteria that property had to meet in order for the council to decide to dispose of it. And basically, just to hit the heavy pointers, it was to keep the trail corridors, so the five feet on each side of the trail. If there was any infrastructure on the ground below, they wouldn't sell. They were also to consider the open space field, the subdivision, and how it impacted that. Also, the point that I just pointed out, the burden on the pressurized irrigation system. And the council said they didn't want to sell if it created more orphan parcels, and they didn't want to sell if there was a potential future city need. And this is a recommendation that came just from the mayor and Brittany discussing a meeting. This was not a staff recommendation, this is the recommendation that's in the report. It's just selling what is lined out in that triangle. Basically, the point of it is just to straighten out those lines and get rid of the big field that we have on that side of the scrub oak. And these are just the motions to either approve or deny. Obviously, we have several of these residents that live in the subdivision that are in attendance, and you're welcome to ask some questions.
Thank you, if that's okay, council. I'm going to invite Amelia Cook to please come back up, because this is specifically what she talked about in the public meeting about this item. So I want, want to have you share maybe where you live, and then once again, if you would share your comment.
Okay, so our home is the one in the corner. So one, two, three, four, right there.
Okay.
And what we want is want to preserve our access to the open space and the, and the old brushes over there, you know? This is something that is appealing to us when we chose the property, you know, to have the open space. We proposed last year, from 2021, you know, we proposed that we get the end of our properties. We pay a surveyor to find out where they were, to get those and to drag them to the open space so that we keep access from our property, from our backyard, to the open space, and we don't lose that value that we consider when we bought the house.
And I, and I think it's appropriate to answer some questions. I think this is good input we're receiving that we had not...
So the question I have is if we put this up for surplus, would you be willing to buy a corridor up to the open space? Or are you saying, "Don't surplus it"?
No, I'm okay if you're telling it, but I want not to lose.
So you want to be able to buy an access through it?
Right, to access from my backyard. And I think Brittany and Sarah, I went to my house, and they saw that when we put, put a little, put a retaining wall right there to hold the property, otherwise the property would just wash off, you know, to the hill, because it's downhill. We put some steps with the idea that when the time came, we could buy, you know, some piece of property that would allow us...
You would still like to buy an access, is what you're saying?
Oh, yeah, I mean...
Okay, so you're, you're okay if we surplus, but you just want to make sure you can have access out to the open area from your property, correct?
From our property, so, yeah, from the ends of our property out to, like, if you go to that area. That's what, we just want to keep that access, we don't want to lose it.
Okay, makes sense.
Any more questions?
Will you please come up to the podium and state your name, please?
I'm a member of the bar, I can't believe I'm making a statement against interest. No, but I...
Quiet, now give us your name.
I actually, oh, I'm Mel Cook, I'm Amelia's mother's husband. Anyway, no, I agree with what Amelia said. I have, it just occurred to me, I hope I'm not, you know, trespassing, I don't know that law too much. I respect public property, and I recognize the city owns that, that property. But I have had the habit of sort of walking our dog.
Yeah, but it's public property, you're walking that city property, so you're okay.
I guess I didn't do very well in property. I don't know, or torts, or civil procedure, anyway. All right, back to the point. Yeah, I like that, being able to access those trails, and I've really loved the Hog Hollow trails, they're amazing. Kudos to Brandon Balkman, right?
Yes.
I mean, what a guy. I can't say enough good about Brandon. But that's, that's all we really want, is if possible, to have some access back there. We don't need to necessarily buy tons of property, just a small little...
So as we look at this triangle, there are five property owners that touch this. Have you guys been able to, as neighbors, come to a decision on how to split that? Are you, is...
We have gotten together, but we haven't come to a common...
I feel like we came close at one point, though, but I just haven't...
Our neighbors aren't here.
Okay, and we will be inviting them up, because that was one of the... We'd been waiting, one of the comments we'd made, I believe it was back in October, we were kind of waiting maybe for a proposal from the subdivision of those five property owners. We had not seen one, we're moving, you know, we have this on the agenda tonight, and that would be something the council could talk about. I just wasn't sure if there'd been an agreement or if we need to be what we call the King Solomon's Court and make a decision, or how we do that.
Well, you're King Solomon, so good, good luck.
Which baby?
And it's sort of, you know, it really comes down to three, because I don't think there would be any dispute about Brady Giles' neighbor, Scott Smith. I mean, I don't think there would be any dispute about the Ballards, which is on the other side of Grant Carlson's house. So it really just comes down to...
The three.
House three, and it is a tough decision, a really tough one.
Okay.
And so if, if it's Solomon's Court tonight, I guess it's Solomon's Court. I just wish you guys could be compensated as well as some of those TV judges are. But...
We do too. I'll second that.
And by the way, thank you so much for all, all your service. I mean, Highland's an amazing city, that's all there is to it.
We all love it.
And regardless of any outcome, we love Highland.
Okay, thank you.
And we appreciate the mayor's service, every single one of council members, Kelly, and everybody else, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, there might be, just, Brady, would you mind if we ask you to come up? So Brady Giles, you've attended a lot of city council meetings, you've been here very interested. Would you mind coming up, just give your input on what you see here before, and what your input? Yeah, we'll have both of you, but maybe Brady, if we have you come up, and we're, we're interested to hear what you have to say.
Well, I, I mean, I'm a processor, so I need to just kind of look and think about this. My name is Brady Giles, I live, one of those there.
Which, which one?
That one right there.
Okay.
First of all, I, I don't want the city council or you as the mayor to have to be in the position of being King Solomon. I believe that we can work with the Cooks and solve something and take it out of this meeting and come back with some sort of resolution.
Because I just don't want it to create discord among the neighbors there. So sometimes we, we do just take it upon ourselves. So if you're angry about it, it's towards us and not your neighbor. So that's what, I just want to make sure that if this is something that it can be amicable, absolutely in your court, but if you think you, it might create some issues, then we can take care of it.
If we get to the point that we cannot solve it, then we'll ask you guys to be the habbits on that.
Please don't let it destroy your relationship with your neighbors. I'm just saying, that's why we could be here. We see a lot of neighborhoods that have sometimes the discourse, we're not interested in hurting your neighborhood. Does that make, so if it has come down that, we will work through it and try to be as careful as we can.
Thank you. Trying to figure out where the line is has been a tremendous effort, and thank you for what you've done here. I think that there will still be questions with how it's drawn, our neighbor to the south, you know, where that, I can't, I mean, speaking for him, I would imagine that this is going to be a challenge for what he wants to do. So I would ask, now that you've got it this far, is let us as neighbors go back, talk about it, take what you've proposed here, and, and then just come to you, you know, outside of a council meeting and just talk about it. Would that be all right?
We could still pass it where this is the surplus, subject to them coming with what, how they see the, you know, recommendation for property lines. I'm just, it's just taken us so long to get here. I just hate to always keep, unless the council feels it's something we can...
I, I would agree with that, I think we could surplus this, but with the stipulation that the neighbors work out some agreement there.
And just, Brady, it took us a while to get here.
Yeah, it has, and, and we understand. May we ask the city council to, to consider one thing, and that is, the price per square foot that we all thought it might be a year ago appears to be the same or different.
It adjusted in January?
It, it got adjusted or will get adjusted?
So it was 274 last year, it's 314 this year.
But we're keeping it 274, which is when they applied.
Yeah, we, we, I think we said any of the stuff we made decisions, but they had one year for the decision of proposing. Now, when we make the motion, as a council, you're going to have to specify that, because they made the application this day. Because right now, as it falls in, it would be at the 314.
But I think we could do the 274.
I'm just saying, I'm the council, you're bringing that up, that's...
Thank you, yes, thank you. Okay, any other questions for me?
Nope, I think you had one more neighbor that was also...
Yes.
Hello? My name is Grant Carlson, I live just to the, it'd be north on this picture of Mel's house, right there, yep. So Brady and I are on the outside of Mel's property. So to be transparent, we did have some issues when we tried to meet up and talk about how to divide it up. And a lot of it was logistics of just following the property lines to make it look uniform, right? Just like you guys have kind of recommended a straight line. I just didn't want a weird-looking sliver running back on property records looking kind of not uniform. So we wanted to kind of follow property lines, and I think we're definitely open to figuring out a way to keep and allow access to the open space. I think we can come up with something.
And I think they'd like to also purchase. I'm just saying, they don't just want access, they would like to be able to own and purchase so they know they have access.
Right, and that's kind of an issue, because I just don't, I don't know... We, we can figure it out, I guess, but...
Yeah.
You get what I'm saying, like, if you look at a property, a plot map, and you see a, a flag lot that's...
I, I would, if I saw that they were pushed out, I'm just going to be, just, it's only me.
Yeah.
I'd probably, you start seeing me kicking and screaming to make sure there's some fairness.
Right.
Okay. But they're going to have to, it'll be a little bit tricky here, without a doubt.
Yeah, and one of the meetings we came to, I think in January, there was another similar situation like this with a property in Highland where they had a corner lot and they figured it out.
That's up in viewpoint, I think.
I thought we'd kind of looked that one up.
Yeah. And they figured something out in that scenario. Do you know what the outcome was?
Yeah, the person on the corner had already fenced and done a lot to their backyard, so they weren't, so it wasn't a...
Okay, wasn't a...
Yeah, wasn't a problem there.
That's good.
Okay. Yeah, but we'd definitely like to purchase. Is there any, on the, on the line that you've recommended, because if you go further north in the neighborhood, it's, those are right along the tree line, scrub oak, there's a lot more, if you eyeball it from live view, there's a lot of space back there. And if you, if you kind of hug along the same distance to the scrub oak, it does open a lot more access to purchase more. And it's also probably better for, well, depending if people are going to hardscape or stuff, there could be some things where it also alleviates all the water issues.
Could you come up to, we look at a map here, can you come up and point to what you're talking about?
Yeah, so, so this right here, these property here, they're the most scrub oak.
Yeah.
And as you get down here, it actually is really, this is not grassing. When we bought our property, there was probably a TV or grassing or something. And so we've known that ever since, but I think there could be some, we can get some of the hardscape and stuff. But all this, that also...
Will you summarize what you said, just because we have no idea.
You need to be on the mic.
We can't, the, the recording, the minutes can't get you.
Oh, sure. So basically, I was going to say, if we could follow the line close, more closer, more closely to the northern part as it comes down, where it's, it looks like it's about 10 feet possibly from the scrub oak, and kind of follow that more closely along the line. Because with the line that you guys have drawn, it cuts out a lot of that land. It's just going to leave it still weeds. So, I don't know if it's possible...
There'd been a lot of discussion, I remember, about should we go with them 15 feet or things. Some of it's also the concern of the landscaping, we didn't want to have a lot of watering. Because if you remember, our original thing back last year is that this is an area that we do struggle to, for pressurized, you know, pressures. And so we were nervous about having a lot of irrigation up in that area. Now, our new policy for, I guess it depends if we sell, that's a problem we can't control, once it gets sold, how much the watering starts happening. That's, that's, I just remember when we met with the committee, why we tried to limit this, so we didn't want as much grass up there that we have to water and increase the, the pressure up there.
Right, and I understand, that, that makes complete sense. But we're willing to figure out something with you guys to, that would, that would hopefully alleviate some of that stress. I think there could be some solutions we could come up with, with what some plans may be. I haven't, I have no plans to do anything, but I would definitely be open to looking at alleviating some of that water issue. And I think some of the other neighbors also have similar ideas.
The concern might not be you, but if you own the property, once you sell, then they could rip out that, you know, that's our concern. It's not necessarily you, it's the future 20 years.
I understand, yeah.
At least I remember that's what the conversation in the committee was coming out of, so.
I understand, you guys are good with sitting down together and coming up with something. I'm wondering if you guys feel similarly, or if you at this point feel like...
I honestly think that we have done our best, and we're coming to a end, and having very stressful... We have met three times, and they have been chaotic. We both have, well, each party has very strong feelings, and we have talked to each other, and we are working to get good in our relationship. But this is a hard decision, you know? You have three people that want the best solution, but we all have our own needs. So I really, I mean, I love my neighbors, I have expressed love to both of them, but this is going to be... I mean, I love my neighbors. I have expressed love to both of them, but this is getting...
So I understand that thing with your... Okay.
But if we have a mediator, I will. If we can come here, not in our home, but here in one of the room, office, or the library, and have a mediator, I think that would help us to get somewhere. But that's my...
I mean, I get it. I just, you know, we've got this thing going on in my neighborhood right now, so I, I get it. What if we ask all the different parties to put together your best idea of what you think is not just representative of your own interests, but as the neighborhood in general? And if you independently gave us your ideas, and then we could look at them, that would allow you guys to have your input, and you all seem like you're reasonable, that you understand it's not just about you. I don't know what you would think about that?
So can I ask clarification on that? Are you talking about these five properties, or are you opening it up to have everybody do it again? Because we've already done that.
No, just these five.
It's the five. Okay, okay.
Yeah, no, I'm...
So if we're, if we're saying, if the city council votes to approve the disposal of this property, then I like Brittany's idea where everybody as individuals gives us a little plan. Maybe Brittany and I can be a mediator. Oh, somebody just drew some idea. Doesn't look too bad, but I think that might be a good way to start. So the first thing is, I think the city council has to decide, is this property for sale or not? Because if, right, if the vote goes, it's not, then there is no, nothing to figure out. If it goes yes, let's dispose and sell the property, then we'll need to have some neighbors come in agreement. Again, we really are interested in making sure we don't put stress on neighborhood relationships.
And then you keep saying five, and there's three of us. Here's what we need to include, the other two people.
We would have to.
Should I just address your question?
And I, I agree, and I think, microphone, I think it was Ms. Peter, Sarah, said, you know, we can address maybe the issue of selling this surplus property. And I think we should, I'm in favor of that, because even if, even if it came down to a scenario where we didn't get what we wanted, I still feel like, you know, if Grant and Brady were to own, it would be a much better scenario than we have now. Because what we have now, unfortunately, is a lot of dry weeds. It's a little bit, it could be a fire hazard, I don't know. I mean, but it's not very, it's not very aesthetically appealing. So I would like, I'm in favor of, of selling it, and we can make one more step trying to get an agreement. And if we can't...
How about we show your idea?
This is what we're thinking.
This is what we're thinking. And Brady, you want to come see?
Mayor Solomon.
That's what we're thinking. We want resolve tonight. We see there's going to be some neighbor feelings.
Hers looks the same.
And I don't know how we get that, the staff to show up there on the camera.
Of course, we'll need to check with those other two residents.
Do you want my picture for the minutes?
So, so these lines are drawn in a general way that we talked before. We just don't quite know any of what the actual...
Square footage?
Yeah, square footage for this.
So are you basing your calculation on what you want, basing on the particular...
Matt, can you make sure you're in the mic here?
Yeah, and then if you respond to him, make sure too, because I feel bad for Steph right now.
Are you basing what you want on the, I don't know how to phrase this, the back line?
I think something that Grant said is, I mean, when you go to resell a property, if you look at a property, it goes like that. Is that going to red flag their property offer? We just had a question about that. And, I mean, it's hard to tell from the aerial view, but it feels like someone else's backyard is in your backyard. And so it just kind of feels awkward. And so would that, when we go to seller whom, would that dissuade a seller? Those were all the questions we were asking, so.
Pardon me? Yes, but does that configure, I mean, it's obviously a rough, rough draft. Does that comply or fulfill what you're looking for, which is access to? Because that seemed like your main concern was access to that, to that open space.
Well, is it open space a meaning to trail, or do you mean...
Conservation area.
Okay, so asking your question about, with this, I own a parcel that's a pie shape. Because I mean, it comes to a point, I think people are looking at square footage. This increases the square footage of your property. And for what you're paying for, it I would assume would enhance your property value greater than not adding it. I'm just saying, I think this, you know, the one property that I think yours is a little bit, what I'm saying, the one that's just kind of more, you're getting to access the trail, that one's more of an access. I don't know how people are going to maybe value, hey, is that, but they're going to have access. They're going to see they have direct access to city property, instead of being closed in.
Well, and you eliminate a weed patch behind.
That was the reason is we don't feel that that's property the city needs to keep.
Well, you, sorry.
It's Kristen Giles. The other issue is, I think we're all trying to keep it that open fill, because that's what the intention was. So no one wants to put a fence or a, I don't know, maybe speaking out, a huge sports court at the bottom or something that would really take away from the view that all the homeowners along there have. And so that's the other thing. When we go to sell it, is someone going to do that? And that narrow space, someone could make a dog kennel, I mean, a dog run. And so it's like, we can't make a decision for right now. It's got to be for 20 years. Someone could put a fence in and make it a dog run. And then it kind of ruins the whole concept of open space. And it does go along the trail, and we want to still keep it beautiful. So that's the other issue of, is, I don't know, this is hard with a skinny roof.
Can we motion to sell the property and then bring it back after we look at it more and do some measurements?
I'm just worried about, you see some fillings here. I was just trying to help, where we make the decision so you guys don't have the neighbor feelings. I was just trying to help you there.
Is it possible to put together something that you guys would see that could make sense, and then we meet together with that? Because I think we're open to meeting up again.
Let's surplus the property, and then let's, it's just easier to meet in a group setting, in a meeting set, and just kind of hash it out and, and see what is the best way to do it, even if we have to talk about structures and fences and all that. We can then add that to it at a later date.
Can we put some notes to address their concern, saying there are no fences allowed, no pools allowed, no sport?
Rob, can we put stipulations when we sell the property? We can put stipulations on that property. Can we enforce them?
What you could do is basically record a restriction against the property, like a CCNR, that would be enforceable by, essentially, all of the neighbors would be able to enforce it against each other. It's not the city enforcing it. It's, we put this restriction on for the benefit of these particular properties, and everyone buys into it, and it's already recorded. So they buy it subject to that, and they all get to enforce it like an HOA.
So I just kind of like throw in a thought. It seems like this alignment here still preserves the conservation corridor, still preserves the trail, and still preserves the open space fee, or not fee, yeah, unfortunately.
Filling.
Feeling is what I meant to say. That's the difference between fiscal and physical. But anyhow...
You're a turkey.
I'm a turkey. So I support surplusing this and then let the neighbors kind of work out the details. But I'm not so sure that we want to restrict everything that could be on it.
There was one other thing, because when it came down to the water issue, the cooks were really concerned about the water issue at the end. A way to guarantee that they have access to that trail is that we retain a 10-foot easement of the city. And that way whoever, no one could put up a fence to turn it into a dog kennel. So it guarantees them access back there. It was just such an, I don't know, it just kind of sets up potentially a dog run, a long dog run, that I don't think, and a fence line. So if it stays a city easement, maybe it helps them, I don't know. That was one idea that came up in the discussion.
So I'm interested, for the cooks, would you prefer an easement, or did you want to own that?
Sorry. By the end of the night, I'll get it. We would rather own it, but if, you know, did I answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Kelly, because I know you were wishing that you could participate more right now. What are the regulations currently about a fence in an open space subdivision? Is it four feet and then open?
Only if the corridor is less than 40 feet wide. So, I mean, if y'all, if y'all were to do, I mean, a little 10-foot wide strip for that length, it, yeah, it would most likely be the four feet tall and then two feet, 55% open. But then everything else along that's facing the scrub oak could be six feet solid.
So I do like the idea of having a vote about the disposal of the property, and then coming back. I don't think we can solve the lines and all of that tonight, but coming back with that at a later date.
I agree. Do you want to make the motion?
Sure. I move that the council adopt the resolution to designate the following parcels as disposable.
You could just say as shown in the exhibit in the staff report.
I'll second it.
Can I ask a clarification? Just because I'm going to have to sign the purchase agreement. At what value?
I'd say 274.
At the 274.
When they applied.
Yeah, purse went to...
Or how long?
Application date.
How long do they have to close at the 274?
What's been the...
A year.
Okay. So I think within the year, then those purchases should be done. And that will also allow some time for, you know, some of these other discussions.
So a year from this date, they would be guaranteed the 274.
From today.
I have a question for you, Rob. Does this mess with anything with our purchase of the 314? Have we adjusted anything? Is it, are we saying based off the date of application? I guess until we turn it down, is what we're saying. We haven't turned this one down. We postponed it. So we're saying that it's 274 because we postponed the decision on that, right?
Right. You're not violating the policy because you were very specific. And when you continued this when it was 274, that it would be subject to that. So you're not changing anything with the current valuation.
Okay. I'll second the new motion.
I've got a motion by Sarah, second by Scott. Any further discussion? If not, we can go to vote. That passes five to you.
Mayor, can I make one comment? If any of you guys have any ideas or about the way that this is split up that you might not want to talk about right now, feel free to email us so that we can kind of have in mind everything else that you're thinking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to item number 10, which is an action item. It's a contractor selection for the city council AEB upgrade. I believe that's you, Erin?
It is indeed. Thank you, Mayor and Council. And as I watch the chiefs get up and down, I get more and more excited for this item to come to a microphone. Or, I don't know, but then you get less steps in, guys, so. Mayor and Council, if you remember, we've had this discussion for a while, but most recently on May 3, council directed staff to solicit bids for some very specific items to fix in our council chambers, rather than the whole gamut to upgrade. Council asked to fix the non-functioning mics or the mics that are causing the scratching noise we hear, the port projector, the recording system to allow for more control, and to fix the noise where else, that we're also getting from our feedback. And then add individual annotating monitors at stations, and then a countdown timer. So staff went to bid for those items. We'd held a pre-bid meeting with some contractors, and then did receive one additional bid from a different contractor. You can see the prices there on the screen, but the low bid by quite a bit was a company called GenCom, which put in a proposal for $45,348. I am going, they, GenCom actually prepared a video that shows what their system does that I think will do a better job than me. And so I'm going to show that for you now.
What?
This is where we need the...
Dang it!
Yes, right? I'm sure that this has something to do with it.
Can't preview the file. Okay, that's...
I promise I tested this before.
I think she did that on purpose.
I think she did. Wait a minute, here it goes.
They mimicked our chambers very well.
I'm curious what I look like.
Sorry, YouTube. Fix the mic jacks, remove the TV that you're currently looking at, because everyone had individual monitors. You will see that staff does as well. We felt that that was important. Recording system with a control panel, a much brighter projector. And so it will go to all of the sources that it currently does, or come from all of the sources and go out to all of the sources that it currently does. And here's John in the back. He will have his own source as well.
And his hair is dark.
Wearing a different colored shirt.
And your on-screen display for timer countdown. And then this part just kind of gives a list of those items that we went over.
So as being up here on the device, one of the concerns is when you say we have a screen. There's times that occasionally you try to go out to the Utah County parcel maps. Maybe you're trying to also, you know, find some other information out there when there's a discussion. Does that allow for us, is only the screen which is being presented?
It's just show, it would be that but smaller. So it's not something that you're going to be able to go to parcel maps. It's whatever, depending on the input source, right? So it's whatever I am showing, that's only an output. It is not an input. So it allows you to, and a representative from GenCom is here. He has sat through all of this. Thank you, Sean. And so he could answer more specific questions for you. But it's, so it would allow you to annotate, right, and draw and say, like what you were just trying to do. You could have drawn on that, and everyone would see it, but you can't go to parcel maps or something else.
Do you scroll through the agenda, or would you have to have a printed agenda?
So you would all likely still have your devices, assuming that you would want to be looking up other things. That would just be, it would be so that you could see it more clearly, right? Because as we have been told, you can't read some of the stuff that's on there, and the color is poor. And so we did, Sean, do you remember the size of the monitors? I know they're small, and the intent is to tilt them so it's not obstructing your view from the public, or the public's view of you. It's just to give you a closer view of what's on the TV currently.
And Erin, I noticed when I haven't been here in person and had to join virtually, I pull up the...
The voter, right?
Well, I pull up the voter, I pull up what I normally have here in front of me on my device to vote and all of that. But then I also pull up the WebEx so that I can see everyone in the chambers.
Do you mean YouTube?
YouTube.
Okay.
And, but there's a delay. So what I'm hearing on the phone is live, so I usually mute, but at least I feel like I'm looking at people.
Sean, do you want to speak to what, so per council's direction, you wanted John to keep doing the streaming. You didn't want us to create a true Zoom room experience type of a thing, and so that wasn't part of the bid. Sean, will you speak to what it can do based on what you've provided in the bid? Sean, will you speak to what it can do based on what you've provided in the bid?
Yeah, so from the clerk or Erin's perspective, she will be able to create a Zoom interface if you'd like so that someone could be able to remotely participate in council. This would allow anyone to get that direct feed, right? So it's nearly live, right? Like it's sub milliseconds. So it's much better than YouTube because YouTube has a, you know, 10, 20-second delay.
No, essentially, if they still wanted to watch, they would need to go on YouTube because your proposal doesn't include cameras, but they could hear everything live at that point. And talk live through our speakers.
We can, so it can, that computer basically is the main source for everything in the room. So that computer, if she joined Zoom on that computer, that would then be able to interface that directly.
You wouldn't see, you know, people's faces. You would see whatever's on the screen.
Correct. Yeah. And that's, that's the difference of integrating the room cameras or not. So, yeah. Is that good? Any other questions on the system or how it works?
So share with me on, is there any reoccurring costs for, we have to enter into maintenance agreements? What's some of the reoccurring costs with this?
Yeah, so most of your reoccurring costs are what you'd already be paying in like Zoom, right? And things like that that aren't part of our services. So obviously, GenCom has services that you can contract out for to have maintly, or monthly agreements or whatever. If you'd like to have someone ready to call in the event that you have an emergency or a need. But it's not at all required and it's not included in this bid.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
The small potential for fuel surcharge. Is that capped at a percentage or is that open-ended? So if gas goes to $20 a gallon, the bid will go up by $10,000 or? So is there some sort of cap or is it just based upon?
So it was based on the project and we're based at a Draper. So needless to say, there's not a lot of travel between our headquarters and the city here. But it is a standard thing that we've thrown in all of our proposals. So it's basically at March of 2021 or actually, I think it's March of 2022, which was at $3.50 a gallon, any excess of that, but.
It's just paying the overage based upon that baseline?
Yes, and honestly, with how close we are in everything, I don't expect to see that come back.
So the positive references that you mentioned here, are those for similar projects?
Yeah. Yeah, these are all council chambers.
Okay, perfect. And then during the timeline, what services that we currently have will we not have access to?
So you're saying during installation, what will you not be able to?
Well, during, the timeline is.
Oh, my apologies. So let me clarify what that means. Depending on what we select, there's a few equipment pieces we need to discuss with Sean, what we select. It will either be in October or March is our estimation.
Oh, I hope it went on for months.
No, no.
You guys are kind of pokey, you must be good.
The week, I know, right? The week probably that you would need to be in here, we wouldn't, I mean, we would just say nobody's in here during that week.
Seamless, okay.
Yeah, it'll be a seamless transition for you. You'll come back one week and you'll have a bunch of new equipment, monitors. We usually like to go through and have a training, you know, do a mock system with everyone just so they all understand how to use it.
And then just out of curiosity, just when you talk about scaling up, obviously, what would be like main types of things that would be possible in terms of scaling up?
There's a lot of options there.
Well, practical and not extravagant.
I'm not saying impractical. So similar options that we've added for other council chambers would be adding a Zoom room to this room, right? So that it is separate from her computer, so it does get a direct feed from the room. That advantage there is just that anyone then can present to the room. I could come here and present through Zoom and everyone could see what's going on.
They would see what that camera is.
Correct.
Okay. And then what, I guess maybe some other time, you can tell me what like an upgrade like that would cost? Because that does seem like a valuable option.
Right. Yeah. Happy to provide those options for you.
So my question still comes, so we're going to have, and Erin, you're on the planning commission still on Eagle Mountain. So they have these monitors. Are you still seeing people then bring their laptops plus have this monitor?
The Eagle Mountain does not have annotating monitors. Alpine City does. Eagle Mountain does not. But we do have individual monitors in front of us. And yes, we all still have our iPads because we're looking at the agenda through those.
Well, what do you think about adding that functionality that I was just referring to? Do you think it's a good addition or would it be an extravagant addition?
Council directed me to scale down and this is what council asked for and this is what we have provided. I think it would be helpful for people participating remotely to do what Sean described. However, this would improve our many people's lives dramatically. The next, I think that would be the next step that would be helpful, but not necessary as long as John keeps showing up for us.
Yeah, let's do phase one and then do phase two if we.
No, I mean, I'm not saying not have John. I'm saying use his camera feed for.
Oh, for the Zoom room option. It really comes down to when you participate remotely, how close to being in the room do you want to be? Is it enough to just see what's on display or would it be better and more seamless, you know, to do what Sean's describing?
But I think lately, I mean, how much, I understand maybe if we have a council person that's not present, that it helps. But really, we haven't started having the public really chime in too much publicly.
No, I mean, our Zoom, or excuse me, our YouTube, I should say, has ebbed and flowed. We always have around five people, give or take, but some of those frankly are John and myself, so.
But perhaps if we offered a better experience than more people with John?
It's very possible.
Okay.
Oops, let's turn off the sound again.
I'll make a motion.
Good.
So I move that the city council authorize staff to sign a contract with GenCom for the council chambers AV upgrade for an amount of $45,348 with a stipulation that we address possible upgrades in the future and look into those.
Yeah, a motion by Scott, second by Tim. Is there any further discussion or are you ready for a vote? Saying none, let's go to vote. That passes five to zero. We now move on to item number 11. We are now at 9:57. Item number 11 is a memorandum of understanding for the heat program. We have our famous treasurer and business license official and Candace being here, as well as Tyler will be also doing this presentation. So welcome Candace. I think this was one of the first times we had it since council, so. She's our treasurer in the city.
Yep, hello. Okay, so the heat program. As we were preparing the budget for this fiscal year, there were concerns having to stretch specifically for our residents. And the direction that we have received is, you know, there are concerns that we want to make sure that our residents are taken care of and have means or opportunities to take care of some of these expenses, so. In researching it, we found the heat program. Home energy assistant target, sorry, assistance target program. So this doesn't cover all of our utilities. So specifically, it's not going to cover PI. It's not going to cover road repair, those kind of things. But it will take care of the essentials. So water, sewer, storm drain, all of that will be taken care of. The nice thing about this program is we don't have to tell somebody no. They go to the state and the state qualifies them and determines whether or not they're eligible. And then they pass that information on to us. So that takes some burden off of us specifically face-to-face telling them no, that they can't do something. The qualification is that they need to be at or below 150% of federal poverty level. And that will impact a few here in Highland. So at least one US citizen or qualified non-citizen, that's another criteria. And they have to be responsible for the home energy costs, which will cover, as I understand it, not just homeowners, but those who rent from specific homeowners. We will spread the word through the newsletter, utility bills, face-to-face, of course, social media and the city's website. And we'll monitor requests for assistance and evaluate need for additional relief options. As I said, the heat program doesn't cover everything, but it gets them at least a third of the way. All right, any questions at all?
So council, we'd asked for, once we did some fee increases, to look at the program that maybe be able to help some of our residents that might be on fixed income. And so this is what has come back is this heat program. Is there any questions or? Now, is there any cost to the city? You mentioned there really isn't. It's all maintained by the state. Does the state send the check to the city for the payment of the utilities?
They do, yes, yeah.
But what's the negative for the city to participate?
The only negative is it does, it does work outside our current processes. So they can apply and the state can take 30 days to approve them. And in that time, during that evaluation period, they just say, hey, kind of pause. Don't turn off their water during this time. We want to make sure that, you know, they qualify or not. And that could potentially push residents out 60 days. So it could double their bill if they don't qualify for that program, which would be hard. I'm not going to lie, that would be hard, especially to be on the border and then to be told no.
Any other questions?
Could we possibly do some sort of a hybrid program to where the city would provide a safety net in case they were rejected from the program and they did indeed qualify?
I don't know what that appeal process would look like through the state. You're saying if they qualify through the state?
No, what I'm saying is if on paper they meet the criteria for the state program and they're rejected, you're saying the downside is that they would have potentially a double bill. So let's say instead of a $50 bill or a hundred, then it would be 100 or 200. So we could say if you fit the criteria and you're rejected, then we would cover that period. So there wouldn't be a double bill.
I see what you mean.
So kind of a hybrid between a city program and the state?
We do have a process in place. If somebody comes to me and they say, hey, you know, this happened and I can't make this bill, then I do allow them an extension. We put them on what we call a payment plan. And it would be current month's bill due plus an extra $100 or negotiated to what they could pay. So we kind of already have a program in place to help those individuals in that kind of a situation.
I just wanted to make sure because you said that this is the downside because it's outside of our programs, kind of just combine them and make it the best of both worlds for someone with fixed income.
Yeah, no, that's totally fair.
I agree with Tim's concerns. And I think we should call that program the cool program.
Very nice. I can get behind that.
I'm assuming you have census data that can tell you approximately how many people you would expect to qualify for this program in Highland?
So the poverty guidelines are dependent on the household size. So if the household, if there's just one person, 150% of the federal poverty guideline is roughly $20,000 per year. For a household of two, that's $27,000. Household of three, it's 34, almost 35,000. Off the top of my head, those that would be under that guideline, I think is about 6% or 7% based on census. I'd have to double check that.
I'm in favor of the program and I think that with what you already have in place for a payment plan, I think that that's, I think that's good. I used to work for the Department of Workforce Services and I know that those eligibility issues can get tricky. And I think it's, I think it's a benefit to us to have the state doing that instead of us.
I'll make a motion. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
I move that city council approve and direct the city administrator to execute the memorandum of understanding with the Utah Department of Workforce Services to participate in the heat program. And then if I may add, to be used in conjunction with current city programs.
I'll second it.
Motion by Tim, second by Scott. Any other further discussion? If not, let's go ahead and vote. That passes five to zero. We now move on to item number 12, which is communication items. There's, I know that Andy, you have the trail plan. We are now at 10 o'clock as we want to be sensitive on timing. So of every one of these communication items, if we can kind of make sure, there's going to be some we're going to eliminate, the ones that we're going to eliminate for tonight is going to be.
Nathan's.
That anything, Nathan is, yeah, we're going to eliminate these. Well, it's just because Nathan was going to do them, so we're going to eliminate the B, which is the general fund facility, financial sustainability and capital facility plan. And that will be, now we'll postpone that with Nathan. We're going to also remove item number D, which is commercial fire sprinkler requirements. And we'll also postpone number G, which is mountain ridge park donor recognition law.
Recon.
That's why at 10 o'clock we got to stop.
No, that's great. I think that's great.
Okay, so if you would mind passing, so just FYI, your draft trail plan, this is, we've had a plan with the roads. We went through for five years to try to maintain all the roads. This is a trail plan that the city now will go through every trail for maintenance or rebuild or rehab the trails in Highland. This was done by Mike, wasn't it? And Andy, Mike did, what did Jordy do this, assistant engineer? Who did the work? They're asking who did all the work?
Yeah, Mike, Mike Ernst put this together. So this, this effort started about a few years ago when the city determined that they were going to come up with a plan. In large measure, this was developed in 2021 recently. It's just been kind of putting the last, diving ice crossing the t's. Now, because of that, this kind of has $20,000 in it, right? We know we've seen some escalation, but you have to freeze a plan at a certain point in time just to be able to move forward. But we didn't have a lot to say on it tonight, especially with it being a short hour. We wanted to just give you a copy of it so that you have the ability to look through it. And also wanted to highlight that this is a maintenance plan. So one of the trails that's mentioned is the Bull River Trail. And we know that there's been some reconstruction needs there.
Which one is it?
The Bull River Trail.
Oh, Bull River.
Got ripped out by the asphalt. We went in and put kind of a mountain trail in.
Yeah, yeah. So this budget doesn't account for any type of major reconstruction. This is kind of just preserving the asphalt, et cetera. But on page 17 is probably the one that you guys are all most interested in. And that's kind of what, what are we going to fix when? And that has about a six-year plan. We were about a year behind. So in FY '22, we did Highland Glen, just right at the end of FY '22. So kind of give you a reference as you look forward. So move that, that 2021 to 2022 and kind of puts you on where we are and lets you see what the priorities are that were determined at that time. So, but what we want to do tonight is just introduce it to you, give you a packet so you've got some light reading to put you to sleep for the next couple of weeks. And then we'll, you know, talk more in detail here in a couple of weeks.
On August the 4th, there will be a vote also for the trail that comes from the Queston Center up to kind of our Mitchell Hollow Park area, you know, that section that we're missing. That was what we call, it's in the Mountain Land Association of Government money, you know, at least when it was approved back in June. And that, that vote will happen on the 4th of August with all the mayors. And I'm anticipating that that will also pass, that we'll be getting a new trail there.
And we'll have, that'll, that'll add to our catalog. But again, just on that vibe, we're very excited about that. But none of this trail plan, this is strictly maintenance of what we have, not construction anew.
Okay.
So that, I just want to make sure everybody, this is just a plan for how we're going to maintain what we have.
And then you're looking at the funding from the quarter cent sales tax.
That's, that's what the city's allocated. So about, we have about $135,000. Unless there's specific allocations by the council out of, say, Parks Capital or something. In our budget in 2023, we have $135,000 in there for maintenance of trails, essentially.
Just a quick question. On the trail counts, that's on page 13, what year were these done?
All of this was put together early 2021.
Early 2021.
This is all basically early 2021, frozen in time. I mean, end of, end of 20, early 21, if that makes sense, over that time period. Unless the council has any more on that, we'll kind of, like I say, give you some light reading for the next couple of weeks, and then we'll talk more in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. Tyler, we're now going to move item number C, the park impact fee.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This, by way of information, we've received a couple of proposals from Lewis Young Robertson and Birmingham, Fred Philpotts firm, to provide some assessments. The one was the general fund financial sustainability study and then the park impact fees. Both of these we anticipate bringing back to council for a formal action, but wanted to make you aware and get feedback if there were specific points that you would like them to include in their scope. So with regard to the park impact fees, the main focus is understanding the level of buy-in that park impact fees will go to and at what point do, have we exhausted or will we have exhausted what can be reimbursed to other funds in the city, the general fund or other funds that contributed to parks in the past. We're approaching the point here in the next year or two where we may receive an impact fees enough to pay off the remainder of the park bond. But that does not mean that all of the buy-in that the city has funded through other park means would have been exhausted. So we want to make sure that we know exactly at what point and when payment schedules may need to change or impact fees might need to change, so.
Is that, is it also true that there were times to make bond payments, we pulled it out of the general fund, and this is looking at what is still owed back from the fund? So we anticipate because of Ridge View with those developments, we'll probably collect enough money to retire the bond when we recognize there still needs to be a payback to the general fund. And that's what this study is also looking at, is making sure we're collecting enough, but then what needs to still be paid back since the general fund paid for the bond that was supposed to be paid by impact fees.
That's correct, Mayor.
So can I just make sure we understand the definition? The park impact fee is paid by developers or a new homeowner when they develop, basically. And the money so far has been going to pay back the bonds which were used to purchase parkland. It looks like we're going to be able to pay off those bonds sooner, which saves us interest. And then we'll use the rest of the park impact fees to pay back the general fund that has helped pay the bonds in the past. Does that make sense? I understand what you told us.
That's correct.
Okay, but it's good that we're going to pay off the bonds early.
And the decision to actually pay off those bonds, that is a decision the council will be able to make. We're not committed to paying them off sooner, obviously, as you indicate, there's some significant.
I just voted for it.
What's that?
I just voted for it.
There you go.
To rid the bonds, yeah.
But that is, is an option for the council to consider at another point.
So we contracted with Lewis and Young to do this analysis and give us a report on these?
That's, that's the direction, yes. So we'll bring this back to council. If there's any other input or feedback that you would like us to include in the scope beyond what Mayor and Councilmember Smith have re-articulated. We want to make sure that it meets your objectives and not just one piece of it.
Do we know how much we're paying them for these reports?
For the park impact fee assessment, they estimate $3,500. I believe the, the general fund analysis was about $13,000. It's a little more robust there. So part of that, that general fund analysis is looking specifically at capital facilities.
That's a, so there's, why don't you go ahead and ask your question there, Cam, just to make sure clarification.
I'm just trying to understand, so did we actually approve that $13,000 when we did our budget, or was that wrapped into something?
That specifically wasn't, wasn't included, that particular assessment. We didn't have those figures at that point, but it is something that we find a fund for.
So are you saying then that we'll make an adjustment to the budget to cover that?
Yes, savings can't be identified elsewhere, yes.
And are we anticipating by, because of inflation, I mean, we went and just did some general fund, but the reason we're looking at it again is because we noticed that inflation has risen costs so much that we need to look at those funds because we're, our projects, we don't have the funding in there. So that's what we're looking at the funding for.
In particular focus to capital purchases, so capital planning. If you look at equipment purchases, we tend to do a large purchase every three or four years. So assessing what it would take to, to make that sustainable and more consistent.
Any other questions on the park impact fee item? If not, let's move to item number E, which is financial year 2023's expenditures.
And that, that should be fiscal year 2022. We don't have a whole lot of expenditures yet in 23.
Oh, this, yeah, this says the fiscal, the financial year 23.
So we'll correct that. So in your packet, there was a detail on the expenditures. This is a preliminary statement for fiscal year '22, year end. The year-end closeout has not occurred, but wanted to point out a couple of things on the revenue side of this statement. We didn't feel it was useful to show the revenues yet as we still have a couple of months to close out. The next item will show you some, some figures on sales tax. But focusing on the expenditures off of that statement that was in your packet, there are a number of year-end closeout items, transfers that will occur. Also some capital equipment in, in the form of snowplows and a number of vehicles that we'd anticipated, and purchases being concluded well before this point. And so those will represent adjustments in 2023 we'll bring to the council. So basically, it's a preliminary statement. There are some changes that will occur. But wanted to put that in front of you in case there are any questions. We'd be happy to sit down and dive into those details with you.
Any questions on that?
No, I just want to say thank you for kind of a heads up and a preliminary look. I think that's very helpful.
So now the exciting thing, sales tax revenue.
There we go. Okay, am I okay to advance? Okay, great. So by way of review, sales tax, the budget in fiscal year 2022, at the mid-year, council amended the projection up $300,000 to 3.325, 3 million, 325,000. The '23 budget, council approved a projection of $3.6 million, which represents an 8.3% increase over, over the '22 budget. If you look at where we are at over the last 12 months, and that is from July of '21 through the end of June of '22, we're slightly above $3.6 million. And that's 12 months rolling, that's not conclusive for fiscal year '22 because sales tax that the city receives in July and August actually represents collections that were sent to this date for sales that occurred in May and June, so we had to wait a couple of months. But if July and August of, of the next two months performs similar to the same two months last year, we'd be at about $3.6 million there for fiscal year '22. Would end up approximately $300,000 above what was.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Here's some detail on there. You can look at month-to-month comparisons. There are times over the last few years where comparing one month to the same month in the year prior were either flat or even in some cases a slight decrease. What's interesting, over the last 12 months, every single month represents an increase over its predecessor in the year before. That's good. It also suggests though, if, when, not if, the market corrects, that other historical performance where there are sometimes dips, that may be something to keep our eye on, so. Any questions about sales tax?
Good news.
It is. I think it is.
Unfortunately, it's probably because of inflation, a lot of these things are costing more, but that.
Oh, you have to throw water on the thing.
Sorry. So for some of us, we hope it kind of decreases on the other side. Okay, there are future meetings that we need to just kind of go through is, of course, Planning Commission next week. August the 2nd, we will have city council meeting at 7:00 PM. That is the week of fling. Fling starts on August 1st, goes through August 6th with the parade on the morning of the 6th. We'll have a public safety meeting if there's agenda items on August 10th. And then August 16th, we'll have another city council, the things. I just, I wanted to, I mentioned this to the chief, maybe a lot of you are not aware. I wanted to commend that the police department, I've noticed that they are very active now, starting to be active in their policing and, and their enforcement. I've always been able to witness some things, so. Okay, I got pulled over last night.
Was it your mayor badge?
No, I didn't use my get out of jail free card or anything. I'm just going to keep quiet. I'm not going to say a word. So I just, I just let him pull me over, so. Anyway, it appears that our encouragement for enforcement is working.
And I never drive a mile over the speed limit now.
So.
That's why I don't wash it.
I nearly had a license. I kept going, do you guys see anything? Do you have our licenses? He pegging us? No. Anyway, that's, any other agenda items or things we need to go before we go to closed session?
Yes, Mayor, I apologize. This came up super last minute, and that's my lack of planning. But for moderate income housing, the state updated their, well, with the Utah legislative update, they've basically updated their strategy requirements for our moderate income housing element in the general plan. And basically, they're requiring that we have a minimum of three strategies, and each of those strategies has to have a measurable timeline associated with that, adopted in the general plan. And that deadline is October 1st, and so it does need to go to the Planning Commission in August. So the idea in talking with Nathan is possibly bringing it as a work session on one of the meetings. Like I've, this is for y'all to figure out, but it's just to give y'all an opportunity to discuss through the existing strategies if you want to switch them out, and then ideas for possible timelines that we can bring to the Planning Commission and then back to y'all.
If I don't see anything else we have, we do have a motion we need to go to closed session.
I'll make that motion.
And what do you have down what we're.
Oh, you wanted to make it?
No, I can do all of this.
We need to state why we're going to closed session.
Yeah. Well, we're going to adjourn this meeting after the closed session, so it's just a motion. So I move the city council may recess to convene in a closed session to discuss the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual in pending or reasonably imminent litigation as provided by the Utah Code annotated, whatever that symbol is, 52-4-205.
Have a motion. Section.
Okay, a section, okay.
I have a motion by.
I need new glasses.
Is there a second to go to closed session?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in closed session. Thank you for being here tonight.